Before we call it to order, I'm going to call on our exemplary city clerk Clementine to share how you can participate.
There are two ways to virtually participate in today's meeting. You may join using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at isearchmonterey.org. To call in by telephone, dial toll-free eight three three five six eight 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 six four, and then enter meeting ID one six zero seven seven two nine three 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 pound. And if prompted to enter participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine, and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. I will call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit that is established for today's meeting. A countdown timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. And today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with approximately 10 seconds delay and on Comcast Channel 25 up to 90 seconds delay. We look forward to receiving your public comments.
Thank you so much. And one more duty, which would be to introduce your caring city council, please.
With pleasure. Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa. He was here.
Yeah, dropped off.
Oh, come back around. Councilmember Smith.
Uh, here.
Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
Mayor Roberson.
Here as well, and I'm sure Councilmember Allen will be right back with us.
I hope so.
Yes. All right. We'll blame it on the ether, as always, that or the dog. All right, and we'll call our meeting to order. And once again, welcome, a warm welcome to everybody. First item is always something that is extraordinarily pleasurable, and has to recognize city employees for milestone anniversaries and retirements in 2022. And it's a very nice staff report with a recognition that the council recommendation that the council recognizes these employees. And also to have a section actually on our agenda items of value drivers. Thank you, Councilmember Dan. Where recognizing city employees supports the value driver to provide sufficient resources and support to develop, retain, and recruit a high-quality workforce. Now, before I steal the city manager's thunder, I would turn it over to our exemplary, excuse me, that was, that's our city clerk, our exceptional city manager. And traditionally, I know sometimes we have department heads who recognize people. Otherwise, I'd more than happy to do it. So whatever your pleasure is, city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, today, uh, we, we are honoring, uh, five different, uh, employees that have been with the city for quite a while. Uh, we we honor Tom Inea as a park maintenance worker. He retired after thirty-seven years working for the city of Monterey. He retired in the first quarter, so he is already enjoying retirement. And I've seen him a couple of times, uh, driving by here and, and, uh, checking up on us. So, uh, Inea, um, uh, very famous name also in, in the city histories. Uh, if you look at the Ineas and their influence on Monterey. So Tom retired after thirty-seven years, uh, in the first quarter. But we also want to, uh, honor, uh, four other employees who are celebrating uh, work anniversaries. And let me start with, uh, Mike Gentry. Uh, Mike, uh, O'Micky came to us twenty-five years ago, and he's celebrating his, uh, twenty-five year anniversary. He is working in the, in our streets division, and he is a senior street maintenance worker. Uh, the other employee that we are honoring for twenty-five years of service is, uh, on the screen with us right now. Uh, it's, uh, our community development director, Kimberly Cole. And, uh, Kim also, uh, has, uh, the privilege of, uh, enjoying working with various councils and lots of residents throughout the year, and she's celebrating a twenty-five year anniversary. Um, Kim, uh, I don't have to introduce, uh, her to you anymore. You, you know her, and, uh, uh, Kim, um, has, has many great skills, but I always praise her as the best listener we have on staff. So she is, uh, really exceptional in picking up on, on vibes when, when you talk at planning commission meetings, or you have meetings with constituents or with residents. Uh, Kim always excels in that. Um, a person that you all cherish and, and, uh, and have seen in action, and, and also know that he's very responsive. If you see something, you say something to me, and I just hand it over to him, and that's Louis Makuso. Louis is celebrating thirty years with the city of Monterey. Uh, he is now our park operation manager. He came, came thirty years ago and started his career in the city and, and worked his way up. Uh, Louis came to us from the Pebble Beach Company, and, uh, again, Louis is greatest talent, I believe, is, uh, he's, uh, the only male in the city organization who can multitask. So, um, uh, he is a true multitasker, and, and, uh, it's, it's really something, uh, uh, that he balances each day, and, and you know what kind of portfolio we have in parks and greenbells and medians uh, and beaches. So Louis is, is celebrating his thirty-year anniversary. And then there's one person that is almost, almost as long in this, engaged in the city as Mayor Clyde Roberson. He gives you a good run for the money. That's our senior crafts worker in building maintenance, Waylon Rollinson. And Waylon has been around the city for now forty years.
Wow.
And, uh, so we are celebrating also Waylon. Uh, he is, um, uh, working in building maintenance in the Presidio of Monterey. He is, uh, one of the building maintenance crafts workers that have seen the city without the work on the Presidio, and was one of the first uh, building maintenance crafts worker that we actually deployed at the Presidio in nineteen hundred, I think, ninety-nine, when we started building maintenance up there. So Waylon Rollinson, also forty years. Uh, and, uh, congratulations to all five employees ranging from twenty-five to forty years' anniversaries, and Tom with his retirement after thirty-seven years. That concludes our presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. And, and that's just, uh, that's really extraordinary. And as, as you mentioned, Hans, uh, we do have a really ex- exceptional workforce. And I'm sure the council, as well as I, always hear about how responsive the city staff is. And in comparison, and we won't mention names, but in comparison to other jurisdictions, Monterey has always had a great reputation for being listening and responding. And a quick, and not just, uh, directly to city time, but for example, at the Laguna Grande JPA the other night. Was that a week ago Monday, I think? Time's starting to blend. Uh, we had, uh, Louis was there along with, uh, Kimberly, providing staff work for Laguna Grande Park, even though ninety percent of it is in Seaside, and it belongs to the Regional Park District. And we, we were very pleased, and Karen Larson was there as well, Chris Smith. So folks not only do their time in the city, so to speak, but it's after hours and all that outreach that we are really, uh, very much appreciate. So the council, I'm sure, joins me in recognizing our long-term employees and and hoping that they'll be doing their sixtieth year with us. And, and so we're very grateful. That continuity is so important when you know who to call.
Yeah.
Exactly. All right. So unless council wants to say anything at this point, I'm just going to go to public comments. Okay, yes, and I, I think I speak for all of us in the recognition. So we're going to go to public comments, and this is an opportunity for the public to speak up to three minutes on any subject within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey and not on the agenda. And so with that, we'll, uh, in a moment, turn it back to Clementine to find if there's anyone in the queue. And as always, you can leave a contact now or in any other way, and all of, uh, the council reads emails, uh, and sees all of the interaction that the staff has with the public. So if the public wants responses, we will guarantee you'll get them, but we'll need your contact. So with that, do we have public comment? Not on the agenda?
I do see a few hands raised, and the first one I saw raised was Anne McDowell. Sorry, McDowell.
Yes. May I go ahead?
Yes.
Thank, thank you very much for, uh, inviting, uh, public comment. I, my name is Anne McDowell. I'm a Monterey resident and a longtime member of the Monterey Sports Center. And I believe this sports center, uh, set a gold standard of excellence in their services and staff, um, prior to the pandemic. Uh, currently, the center is mostly run by part-timers who lack training, experience, and skills. So I would really like the city council, city manager, to restore at least three full-time positions, and specifically those should include Leslie at the front desk and Lupe in the women's locker room. Uh, these two individuals do the work of three part-timers and improve the functioning of the sports center immeasurably. Uh, Lupe is part mental health worker and has supported many, many members by her warmth and understanding. It really makes such a difference to have full-time people, and I, I, I think you'll see that investment is so worth it for the whole community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next we have Anthony Munoz.
Hello. Am I coming through clearly?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Um, so I'm, I'm going through a situation that has revealed to me that Monterey has no sort of renters' rights or protections in place. We're one of the only cities in California that apparently does not have any sort of over, overruling kind of, uh, renters' rights. It's just California that we are left with. And I read your report from February where you had done a report that, you know, stated there were only sixteen cities out of, of all of California that had any sort of renters' rights. Those happen to be some of the biggest cities in California. I went on to read your report stating that you, and I'm wondering where this data came from. There was a price tag of two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars annually for two full-time employees with an additional seven, two, or twenty-five thousand dollars in supervisory time in order to supervise these employees. And I'm wondering how it is that you arrived at that price, if there was any sort of bidding, any sort of search to find a better price than that in order to get this going? And what, if anything, in the last five years Monterey has done that would actually have affected a renter in this area? Now, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. And next we have Kent Glazer. Please go ahead.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity. Um, Kent Glazer, um, resident of Monterey, of course. And I just want to, um, urge the, the city council moving forward to consider and debate and have a conversation about making, uh, the city of Monterey a living wage city. Um, there are more than forty localities, including counties and cities in California that have done this. It makes a big difference for people living um, in difficult circumstances. And when cities or counties take on a living wage ordinance, the impact on the budget in terms of the human resources that you're all concerned about, and I'm concerned about in public finances is quite minimal. And you can send a signal to everybody here in Monterey that people who live and work here deserve a living wage. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, and there are no further hands raised at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And as always, thank you for your public comment. It's always thought-provoking. And so we'll go to our consent item. Did anybody have any public who wanted to pull anything from the consent that we know of? Uh, council members want to pull anything or have a comment about the consent?
No, Mr. Mayor, we're not aware of anyone from the public pulling something from the consent.
All right. In that case, and we don't have any council questions, uh, I'll move approval over the consent agenda. Uh, second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Albert. Yes.
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 Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Uh, if you got Gracie's vote, I vote yes, too.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Uh, yes. And we just have some, uh, work people in the neighborhood, so Grace, Gracie's keeping an eye on them for all of us. You can feel perfectly safe. Uh, so let's go to our, uh, public appearance item, and this, of course, is something that we're monitoring as we go forward, as, uh, the pandemic mandates and different rules are changing. We know even in our school districts, the state has given school districts the ability to require, um, no longer to require masks. And the LA school district is still going to require masks for students, but MPUSD, I know for sure, is making it a recommendation. My daughter reported to me that almost all of the students at her school in Seaside were wearing masks against her stealing the enough. So this is kind of a segue into, uh, when are we going to go full in-person, hybrid, et cetera? I did hear from an NCIP member who cited the value of meeting in person, especially with that committee that has a very complicated agenda and task before it. So I think we'll turn it back to our exceptional city manager who can explain where we are in this process.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a very brief presentation for you. This is, uh, an, uh, uh, routine agenda item. It has become that for, for quite some time now, and, uh, um, our city clerk, Clementine, will, uh, present to you the, the slides that we prepared for today.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, as you recall, but I'll briefly cover for the public, um, there was an assembly bill passed last September, which, um, temporarily modified the Brown Act that controls our public meetings to allow teleconference attendance with loosened guidelines, as long as it is done for public safety purposes during a proclaimed emergency, and as long as the legislative body makes regular findings to say that it's still needed. And so as a brief, um, recap, we held a hundred percent remote meetings from March twenty-twenty through June twenty-twenty-one, and that was all under um, emergency orders that were put out by the governor. On June through January, we were hybrid, meaning people in the council in particular could attend in-person or by teleconference without those special Brown Act rules in place. And then from January until the present, we've been a hundred percent remote again due to the Omicron spike. So the recommendation for you today and in the resolution is to authorize the teleconference attendance of meetings at the council, its boards, commissions, and committees for this next thirty-day period, March sixteenth to April fourteenth. And you might note that the resolution was silent on the meeting format. The proposal is that the city manager will direct staff on the meeting format based on the current conditions. And it's my understanding he intends to hold public meetings, starting with the hybrid format on April first and going forward. And that's it for my, unless you have questions.
All right, any questions? All right, if that concludes the staff report, we'll see if there's any public comment.
It's a question from council on the high, I believe.
Oh, Councilmember Allen? Yeah?
Yeah, I guess I didn't understand the last part of it. Um, if you could repeat that. So we would be having, allowing teleconferencing or having teleconferencing for the next thirty days, but...
Yeah, but we will allow hybrid meetings starting April first.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Okay, so we'll make sure, uh, with, uh, authorization, our boards and commissions, especially in, in CIP, know that. All right, uh, thank you for the question. And again, public comment on this one, Clementine?
I know we got a letter. I do not see any hands raised at this time.
All right, then we'll bring it back to the council for, or entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, staff, agenda item ten.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes. So that passes five-zero. Our next, uh, public appearance item is to amend and restate Resolution twenty-one one-twenty-seven, the master fee schedule for Parks and Recreation Department fee schedule. And it's always something, of course, that any council and staff is reluctant to do. But this is why the increases that we're looking at are very moderate. Uh, because the last thing we want to do is to exclude anyone from participating in our programs. And aside from the current inflation that we're experiencing, costs just go up no matter what time of year it is. I can remember the, uh, when, when the inflation rate was sixteen percent. Uh, that was in, what, that was just, uh, Jimmy Carter and in late seventies, early eighties. And it was great if you had a savings account, but if you didn't, life was hard, and we were up at sixteen, sixteen percent for uh, home mortgages, if you can believe that. Of course, the Fed has frozen it, uh, for several years, and we certainly have gotten used to that. So this is why I think it's, uh, well to take a look at our fees, always making sure that we can pay our bills, but on the other hand, keep them reasonable. So Hans, we, I think you might be wanting to introduce someone to make this presentation, I'm guessing.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, before our Parks and Recreation Director, uh, Karen Larson will, will present, uh, the, the proposed fee adjustment. That was exactly one of our guiding principles, that we need to strike a balance between, um, our increased operating costs, but also to, uh, ensure that our, uh, services are affordable for our residents. And, uh, this council has heard multiple times residents, uh, sharing with them uh, their concerns about, uh, the quality of life and affordability. And we have seen, uh, utility rates increase across the board. Uh, we have seen uh, the shrinkflation, where you get the same item, uh, for the same cost, but instead of twenty-five items, there are just twenty now stacked in there, or it shrinks by, by the ounces. The new word for that is shrinkflation, is a fact. The gas prices are going uh, up, 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 uh, because of the, uh, war in, in the Ukraine. Uh, and so, uh, our costs go up as well. The, the minimum wage that was started by the state of California and has definitely, uh, it, it's, uh, it's advantages. And, and Kent Blazer, who just spoke about living wages, that will have a different effect as well. But the point in all of that is we, we needed to use a, a good balance. Uh, and then, uh, uh, while we will not recover the cost, uh, while the city will continue to support through the general fund revenues, a great deal of our recreation programs. I think we tried to accomplish that with this, uh, presentation and the fee proposal. And with that, I, uh, hand it over to our Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Hans. I'm gonna attempt to share my screen now. How's that?
Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Tonight, we have a presentation regarding the adjustment of the Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule. The presentation will describe important adjustments to the Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule in order to balance the needs of the community while addressing the city's ongoing financial challenges. I will explain the need to raise fees and increase revenue, as well as simplify the Monterey Sports Center memberships. So while I adjust the fees now, um, on top of the need to invest in our facility infrastructure, the department has had to adjust revenue to the ever-changing cost of operations. Uh, the fees have just not kept pace with the increase in expenses. So in addition to COVID-nineteen and the department reductions to staff and services, uh, they've required us to rethink our business model. And so now is the time to capitalize on this culture of change to reimagine and simplify our business processes by leveraging technology to do more. Uh, the department's been grappling with a legacy software system that's well over twenty years old, but we're now on the verge of launching a new software system that will enable more convenient self-service twenty-four-seven. The general fund budget for the Parks and Recreation Department is about twelve million dollars. This includes the Monterey Sports Center, multiple community centers, several sports facilities, special programs and events, and parks operations, which includes Veterans Memorial Park Campground and Urban Forestry. Key factors and operational costs increase include the cost of utilities. They continue to rise, and they're up approximately thirty-nine percent. There's also the cost of part-time staff salaries, with the minimum wage increasing from eight dollars an hour in twenty-fourteen to fifteen per hour in twenty-twenty-two, and that's an eighty-eight percent increase. Uh, not to mention that a part-time labor market is extremely competitive right now, with public and private sectors alike struggling to attract and retain a part-time workforce. The cost of program supplies and materials has also risen due to supply chain issues and inflation. The Bay Area Consumer Price Index, or CPI, has increased about twenty-four percent since twenty-fourteen, or on average, about three-point-four percent per year. Other considerations include COVID-nineteen expenses, such as enhanced cleaning, testing, sick leave, and personal protective equipment, as well as other associated costs with the restoration of programs, services, and staff. Since twenty-fourteen, the fees have increased, uh, about ten percent, and most recently, an additional five percent with the establishment of the Facility Maintenance and Improvement Fund. But we need to keep in mind that the Facility Maintenance and Improvement Fund does not address the rising cost of staffing, utilities, supplies, and services. So given the described overall cost increases, the Parks and Recreation Department is recommending the proposed fee increases of approximately five percent to defray these expenses while still retaining affordability. Next up, uh, streamlining the Sports Center memberships. Uh, the Monterey Sports Center membership structure was created thirty years ago, and both fitness and recreation industries have evolved since then. So technology has transformed the way communities shops for programs and services. Customers now conduct research, register for programs and services, or purchase products, all from the palm of their hand, anywhere, anytime, day or night. So as you may have noticed, the Monterey Sports Center has a wide variety of memberships based on age, residency, and length of time commitment, such as three months, six months, or one year. So our proposed model will still include a multitude of options based on age and residency, only now we'd like to add a teen membership for thirteen-to-seventeen-year-olds. Because the nine-to-twelve-year-olds have less access to fitness amenities, we thought it was only fair to charge a lesser price. Also, to be more congruent with other gyms in the industry, we'd like to add a monthly subscription membership where individuals or families pay for a membership by the month with an auto-pay method, either with their credit card or electronic fund transfer or EFT. Because there's no time commitment for this membership type, and since patrons may cancel at any time, we think this model simplifies sales and renders the three- and six-month measure, uh, membership options unnecessary. And for those who prefer to pay in advance, as well as receive the best value, we'll continue to retain the annual pay-in-advance membership. So just to recap, the, the new model, it will include teen memberships, monthly subscription membership with auto-pay or EFT, and the annual pay-in-advance memberships. And another new feature, as all of the features will be available online. This is a brand-new service that will be rolling out in the spring with our new software. Potential revenue generation, uh, based on post-pandemic revenue projections, the fee adjustments may generate approximately a hundred-and-five thousand per year. And when the department reaches pre-pandemic levels, the fee adjustments could generate a the fee adjustments could generate approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand per year. If the fees are approved to start April first, there's a potential to earn just over twenty-six thousand dollars this fiscal year. Earlier this month, the Parks and Recreation Commission voted unanimously to recommend these adjustments to the city council. So in conclusion, the staff and the Parks Recreation Commission recommend that the city council amend and reinstate the master fee schedule to adjust the Parks and Recreation Fee Schedule effective April first, twenty twenty-two. And this concludes the presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does the council have any questions for our extraordinary Parks and Recreation Director? All right.
Mayor, I have a few questions.
Yes, please. Councilmember Tyler.
Hi Karen, thanks for the great presentation. I'm just wondering if do we have some analysis on maybe some more micro trends in regards to membership? Folks coming back to the Sports Center, I know that we we've seen decreased levels since the pandemic, but I'm wondering, is that starting to creep up a little bit? Are we seeing just a moderate membership since since we reopened the Sports Center? What is that looking like?
I've been seeing a gradual increase in memberships for sure. We did have a really great turnout for December and January, so all of those New Year's resolutions were great for us, not back to pre-pandemic levels, but we still had a really nice turnout for that. And I'm hoping that now that the mask mandate has been removed, that more people will continue to be comfortable coming back. And as we're reinstating more and more classes, we think that's going to attract people as well and other services that we continue to provide. My goal is always to create value with our prices and and our membership offerings and then build that volume, because that's where we really start to make the money in a facility of our size. Because we're so large, we really start to see the revenue really pay off once we start creating that volume.
If I may, may add a few few more thoughts to that. We are by far not where we need to be. We are about, I want to say slightly approaching fifty percent of volume where we were in two thousand nineteen. That building has a fixed cost, rain or shine. And the 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 revenues that we project for next year right now are being created as we speak. And I I want to compliment Karen and Andrea for showing some optimism in those numbers. Nevertheless, when we present to you the budget, you will see that there will be a substantial support necessary from the general fund to bring the to let the Sports Center continue to operate at its current level. Ms. McDowell, who called in earlier and spoke about three full-time employees, bring them back and part-time employees, we we hear it loud and clear. Yet the point in all of that is we we still don't have the customers back to which basically help us also to afford additional positions or reinstate positions. We will be creative over the next twelve months. We will be trying to do our best to to bring up the the visitor state, but right now we are about fifty-six percent less in revenues than we were in two thousand nineteen. And so again, we're working hard. Andrea and and Karen will have creative solutions. We offered free Friday fun for families where we hope they sign up, et cetera. But it is for us a facility that will require our continued support, at least for the next twelve months. It will come back. I I am not I I do not doubt that and we will be back, but it takes a little bit longer than 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 we had hoped for. And I hope that answers this even more than you wanted me to answer.
No, it's good. It does, you know, raise some more questions in my mind in regards to maybe some alternatives that can be presented to us in regards to some solutions to that deficit. Because I think we were already dipping into the general funds in a significant way in regards to the Sports Center. And I and I think part of that speaks to the value of what we believe in within the city of Monterey. But but I'm just, I think it begs us to wonder what's that impacting with? What are we not doing because we're having to support that that I think you said fifty-four percent of membership that hasn't returned to the to the Sports Center? So I think a conversation for another day. I would just ask one final question, but before I do that, I did want to take this opportunity because I think the Sports the Sports Center is so wonderful and say that the Harold Reader's Choice Award went to the Sports Center first place for best fitness center and gym and the best swimming pool lessons. So kudos to Sports Center and the recreation staff for that great achievement. Last question on this topic is, do we have comparables? Are there numbers that we can look at in regards to what what are what our comparables are, just so that we can have that perspective to share with the public?
Yes, and Council Councilman Williamson, if you're able to tell me which comparables you're most interested in. We do compare our membership rates with surrounding area gyms. We have those kinds of comparables. But then we could also compare revenue compared to what we used to offer. Right now, we're only offering fifty percent of the programs that we used to offer as well. So as Hans has mentioned in the past about the chicken and the egg, that's a challenge for us as well. It's like we need to bring in the people and the revenue in order to bring back the full-time staff. But the staff also provide programs and services that bring back the people. So this has been a a dance that our department has been doing in order to start reinstating programs and services and then getting people back to return. But if you let us know which comparables you're particularly interested in, it definitely either compile them for you or work on getting them if we if we don't currently gather that type of information.
Sure. And and I I'm not sure if it's necessarily needed at this point. I think I think there might be some general support in moving forward because this is is needed and reasonable. But maybe just for future opportunities, the the thing that pops to my mind in regards to comparables are just the the typical fee that folks would expect to join a a gym membership in the in the local area. So I think that's kind of what I'm thinking about, but if there's if there's other information or data available that we could share, I think that would be most appreciated. So.
Sure, we're always very interested. I probably shouldn't say this on camera, but we're always very interested in what our competition is doing. And we're also, we have to keep in mind that we're a little bit unique. Not a lot of facilities will cater to children. Generally tend to either cater to, you know, eighteen to forty-year-olds or eighteen to forty-five-year-olds. Or if you look at like the Wellness Center at Marina, they they focus on an older population or a population that may be recovering from injury or illness. So we're kind of a combination of all of that, plus we have our family and children element. So we're similar, more similar to like a Y M C A. So we do even keep an eye on Y M C A prices and how they're charging and what types of memberships and services they offer.
I love it. I appreciate it. Thank you so much, Karen. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Allen had a question. We're still in the questioning section of our meeting.
Yeah, first of all, Karen, thank you for all that information. I do have a question. It's not directly related to the fee schedule, which I do understand is more just programming. And I'm I'm wondering if you could speak to how much or whether you anticipate bringing back the summer programs for kids? I've certainly heard from a lot of constituents that that is something they really missed in the in the pandemic and it's really important. Do you anticipate bringing those kinds of summer programs back?
Yes, sir, we absolutely do. In fact, we were able to start with this spring. Thank you so much for your reinstatement of our sports coordinators. We were able to reinstate our spring programming, which is was reflective of more of our pre-pandemic offerings. We're able to offer two weeks of sports camp that included extended care. So those are full with a waiting list now. We're offering two weeks of a summer break camp up at Hilltop Park Center. One session is full and one is very close to being full. And we're also offering a track and field camp that is maybe half a day, like nine to two, that is going to be held at Solicito Ballpark. So we're able to bring on all those programs for the spring. And then for the summer, we're also looking to bringing back Camp Kinsabi, which is our overnight resident camp out at Toro Park, as well as day camp at Whispering Pines. And then our playground program as well as our sports camp at the Monterey Sports Center. So that's what we're aiming for right now. One of our biggest challenges is getting enough staff to work. In the past, we always had students that returned year after year, so they brought their knowledge base. They grew up in our programs. Then they also were returning employees year after year, brought a lot of experience with them. But now a lot of those, because we've had two years off, a lot of those young people have moved on and we haven't had people that that would naturally move up. So we're we've already been recruiting. We've had a positive response. We're really excited and optimistic for the summer.
Thanks, Karen. That's great news.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Ed, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question, Karen, and I I know the answer, but I I want the public to hear this. We're recruiting camp aides. And how do they do that? And if you know what's the hourly rate when they start off, so make your plug so people can hear. We have positions open. And I say that because I know the camps are all very valuable to working parents. And that that's one of the things that we so missed during the COVID period. And so having those restored is a significant impact for working families to have their kids cared for during breaks and especially summer when they just don't have a place where they can take their kids. So if we can plug that, maybe there's yours listening, it will help us get the recruitment word out.
Yes, please. We we're encouraging everyone and including even city employees, if they know any teenagers or young adults that would particularly like to work in our programs as lifeguards or swim instructors, camp counselors, recreation leaders, park leaders. We have a wide array of positions that we need to fill and they start at minimum wage and then and and go up from there. Definitely on the lower end of of that pay scale, but if you are a camp director or assistant camp director, those pay pretty well somewhere as well. For Camp Kinsabi and Day Camp, they have weekly rates that they would get paid by the week. And then the other programs are paid by the hour. We definitely will be putting that up on the website and we've been doing a lot of work with Lori Welker and our outreach as well to get the flyers and the word out to the public. We also have our staff recruit at actually our local high schools. We go and visit the high schools and actually talk with the young people and answer all of their questions and accept applications right on site. So that is another thing that we do that tends to be very popular. And that's how I started. Someone came to my school and high school asked if we would want to be a camp counselor or a rec leader, and that's how I started in our department. So I still strongly believe in that method as well.
Yeah, and and I'd just like to add there that in in my past and what I do now on a resume, a position of a camp aide or a camp worker really makes a big difference when you move through eighteen, nineteen, twenty college and you're applying for jobs. And having your resume include city work as a camp counselor, camp attendant means something. So for those that are listening, it's a good way to get started and start building your resume to work towards that career that you decide. And maybe you decide like Karen that you'll stay with the city and it's a great job. But I remember Karen when she first started. And having having those young people come and join our family is very important to help support our community. So let's spread the word.
Absolutely. And thank you for saying that, Councilmember Smith, because I could tell you from my personal experience, starting as a camp counselor and a recreation leader, it helped me become a resident assistant in college. And that paid for all my room and my room and board and gave me a stipend of my all three years of three years of college. So that was incredibly helpful to my parents and our finances. So it was great.
Yeah, build that resume and don't take on student debt. That's my plug.
Oh, that's just really awesome. I'm going to sign up as a camp director this summer at Whispering Pines. So Councilmember Dan, any questions?
I just have comments. I'll wait till the public.
Yeah, we've wandered a little bit away from questions to comments, but that's okay. We'll 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 get ourselves back on task here. Let's go to public comments, then we can continue the conversation.
Does Hesse's hand raise? So Bob, please go ahead.
Hello, councilmembers. Good to see you all again. Just want to make a comment to consider, not sure Karen if you've considered this yet, but one of the concerns, I think, for people in signing up with this on and off of open, closed, open, closed, people are afraid they sign up for the year. And then might they be suddenly shut out and shut down for a while? And could you possibly consider that if such a situation would occur, they get their membership extended? And I think if you really press that a little more, it'll help people coming back. That's just an idea to throw out, Karen. Thanks for the time. Thank you all, work that you're all doing.
May I respond to that? Mr. Mayor, may I respond to that?
After public comments.
Yeah, after, I'm sorry, the dog is is distracting. So yeah, we'll do that after public comment, please. Right? Thank you.
So I do not see any further hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll close that section of the public appearance. Yes, Karen, would you like to respond to Mr. Fallas's question? Because I think the city did that, but let's go ahead and clarify.
Absolutely. So we did do that. We did freeze everyone's memberships when the facility closed. And we've been working with people as they're comfortable to come back and return to the facility and and giving them the time that they had missed. With our new membership program that we have established, if it is approved tonight, they will also will be able to freeze and stop the memberships as well. So we didn't continue, we didn't continue to charge people's accounts when the facility was closed. And so even if they buy an annual membership or they do the new subscription membership, we'd be able to pause that for them if we are closed for pandemic reasons or any other natural disaster or something like that. I think the city would work with them on that.
Good. Thanks for the clarification. Councilmember Dan, you had a comment that you were waiting for this part of the meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, just a short comment. Something going on there. Anyway, so I I wanted to mention something that our city manager mentioned was that, you know, a lot of people don't realize that our recreation and a lot of our programs are subsidized by the general fund and that that the fees do not pay for the total programs. And that's one of the reasons why our fees are lower than other sports centers or other recreation programs. And and I like to keep it that way. I really like to see our 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 residents be able to enjoy their surroundings and and the and the city's programs as long as we keep the fees at a reasonable rate for them. And that brings me to the fees themselves. I I can support the fees. I have no problem with that at all. As long as the programs remain high quality, I think you'll lose memberships and you'll lose the the residents if you raise the fees, but you don't keep the high-quality programs available to them because people like high-quality programs. So again, I I don't think people mind paying a a higher rate as as long as we invest in those programs and we keep them at a high quality.
Yeah, good point. Thank you. Just historically speaking, when they I first proposed the Sports Center, it was in the mid-eighties and believe it or not, it was not really that controversial, but there was thought among some members of the community, and you've heard this story before, that it should be it was going to be a retail, another Del Monte Center Mall as a stimulus to downtown. There was also a study done by former city manager Fred Muir on a potential performing arts center. That's interesting reading, nineteen eighty-one, if you want to look at that one. And so we actually put an advisory vote on the ballot and did set a target for the amount that the general fund would support the Sports Center. And historically, and that's operation and maintenance, unfortunately, it doesn't include the the renewal part, which is something that we have to look at at a thirty-year-old facility that has water in it. And so you know that requires renewal. But historically, it has met eighty, ninety percent of its own M. Also, I think it's a primary purpose of city government is to provide recreation and parks and sports. As you all pointed out, the what we offer at our community centers, especially after school, preschool, these services are so valuable to our residents and our families that that it's really amazing. And also, I shared with you once before during the pandemic, I asked a joining mayor if the Recreation Parks Department was if, uh, the Recreation Parks Department was heavily impacted, to which he said, hey, we only have two men, people in that whole divi- division anyway. And so that puts in a perspective about what the, um, amount of recreation and sports and community care that our Parks and Recreation Department, that this city does for the community at large. It's, it's really way, way beyond most cities our size. And as a final comment is, yes, we'd like to be back to a hundred percent activity. But on the other hand, doesn't it be zero? When we were sheltering it in place and it was closed? So we'd love it to come back a hundred percent, but there are gonna be people who are a little bit careful and maybe, uh, more cautious. When I read about Switzerland and, and the UK having a surge of the Omicron two variant and, and surge is hit happening again. This is the sort of thing, whether that hits us or not, that's the sort of thing that is in people's minds when they go into group activities. So anyone else, are you ready to make a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Dan, seconded by Councilmember Tyler. Uh, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
And Mayor Robertson.
Yes. Karen, once again, thank you for the outstanding report and rationale and also convey the council's appreciation to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Because I know, uh, they're very reluctant to raise fees too. So it always gives us confidence when we know that they have blessed this, keeping things affordable while meeting expenses. We're gonna adjourn to closed session. Is there anyone in the public who wanted to comment on our closed session items that we know of? Clementine?
I don't see any hands raised at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so we will recess to, uh, we'll adjourn to closed session. And we'll probably have to jump to another Zoom link, keep our fingers crossed. Thank you, everyone, we'll see you shortly.
Recording in progress.
Well, we wanna welcome everyone back to our city council meeting. And, uh, a warm welcome to you and, and thank you for the privilege of your time, staff, council members and public. So before we go any further, we, uh, we'll ask, uh, our city clerk to show us a flag, please, and we'll do the pledges, uh, in just a moment. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the.
And to the republic, which stands. One nation. Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible. With liberty. And peace and justice for all.
Thank you so much, then back to our exemplary city clerk for an explanation of how folks can participate in our meeting, please.
Yes, there are two ways to virtually participate in this evening's meeting. You may join us using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom using your computer, smartphone or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at icertchmonterey.org. To call in by telephone, dial toll free eight three three five six eight 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 six four and enter meeting ID one six zero seven seven two nine three 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 pound. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. I will call on each public speaker in order if their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit established for today's meeting. A countdown timer will be shown on the screen. If you are connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. And today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with approximately ten seconds delay and on com- Comcast channel twenty-five with up to ninety seconds delay. As always, we look forward to receiving your public comments.
Well done, and one more task, please, which is introduce your caring city council.
Yes, Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Robertson.
I'm here as well. And so we'll call our meeting to official order. And we have continued public comments. And this allows the public for up to three minutes to share anything, uh, that's not on the agenda that they'd like to share with us. And as always, if you'll leave a contact either now or later, perhaps through suggest@monterey.org, our able staff will be getting back to you. And so with that, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public for comments. We did receive, uh, an email for, from Lorna Moffett, which I entered in the public record. So she knows that that has happened and, uh, in the case that she does call in. So we're open for a public comment, not on the, items not on the agenda, please.
All right, we've got a couple phone callers. So I'll first call on the one with the last three digits, zero nine four. You will need to, uh, unmute yourself by dialing star six. Telephone caller with the last three digits, zero nine four. Please unmute yourself by dialing star six. There you go.
Hello.
Please go ahead.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Craig Downer, I'm a wildlife ecologist. And I'd like to support, um, the use of, uh, horses, particularly those that have lost their freedom and are languishing in the holding pens. I'd like, um, your government to work out a, um, transaction where they could be placed in areas where there's, uh, often excess dry, uh, fuel that serves as tinder and crea- uh, creates some catastrophic wildfires. And that, there are certain stipulations of the federal code and I believe also there in, uh, California and in Monterey that would permit this. Uh, many of these horses, um, have a very bleak future and, and end up being slaughtered, uh, although they don't often mention this. And I have also done a study, um, showing that the horses are superior, uh, carbon sequesters because they have a different digestion from the, uh, ruminate, uh, common ruminate, cloven hoofed animals that are, um, promoted so much by people. So, uh, I think they're beautiful animals and would really grace, uh, your county or, and, um, just to have that recommendation for you. Feel free to get in touch with me. I have a lot of, um, expertise in this field of, uh, uh, horse conservation and ecology.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next caller is a telephone caller with the last three digits, nine zero two. Please go ahead.
Good evening, this is Nina Beatty. Last year, or actually in twenty twenty, the, um, Monterey City Council initiated a compatible or joint youth plan study to evaluate the military civilian land use compatibility um, in this area, not just Monterey, but Monterey County, San Luis Obispo County, um, and neighboring cities. And it hired a contractor to begin this process. It will assess encroachment of cities and counties on the military and vice versa. One of the objectives is to recommend potential changes to the local government growth policies and or land use regulations. This is a critical and, uh, very far ranging, uh, plan that's never been done before. Um, and the, one of the main objectives in the, uh, RFP that was circulated, that it will involve the public and other stakeholders in all stages of the planning process. But I have yet to hear anything about this process, the committee hearings, the policy committee, the technical committee, all these, uh, different aspects that were outlined in the RFP. There's just been silence from Monterey City. Um, this is a big deal, what is planned. And, uh, as exemplified in other areas, the military has taken a bigger and bigger footprint in these communities and is already doing that in this community. Um, there, the quotes in the RFP were clear. Um, that public participation in education, the CUP will also contain a major public outreach awareness and education campaign. Um, initial CUP visioning sessions, several public informational workshops in vicinity of, uh, different, uh, facilities that are being included. Uh, public involvement strategy, informational pamphlets, fact sheets, public meetings, on and on and on. And also includes that from the very beginning, um, I quote from page fifteen, "Public participation is an integral part of the CUP planning process to help assure, ensure decisions are made in consideration of public needs, priorities and preferences of proposed outcomes." Early and continuous public involvement brings diverse viewpoints, et cetera, et cetera. And successful public involvement, um, it, it, just a lot of language about the public and yet there's been silence. And this project was the, the consultant was hired in November of twenty twenty. We've had a year, almost a year and a half of silence. Um, people that were interested in this process, and there were a few of us that spoke up at the RFP hearing, um, I'm not on any mailing list where I'm getting any information about this. And also, the city of Monterey is project manager and there is a specific person that's going to be project manager, that's a, that's an employee of the city of Monterey. Who is that person? Again, no in- information has been forthcoming to the public, um, briefings to the city council about this. I would like this information.
All right, thank you. Uh, our next speaker has the last three digits, seven zero five. Seven zero five, please go ahead.
Yeah. Yes, uh, before I start, uh, city council members and Mayor Robertson, uh, do you see the video on screen? What I sent?
Let me get that started for you, Lorna, I didn't realize that we'd see you, I apologize.
Thank you. I am Lorna Moffett, and tonight I would like to further educate you on the plight of our wild horses and burrows due to the mismanagement and corruption of Bureau of Land Management that is quickly bringing our horses to the brink of extinction through roundups and sterilization methods. These horses are disappearing and ending up in auction yards all over our country where the kill buyers send them to slaughter. I have contacted Congress and Panetta about this because the court system has been just as corrupt and only Congress can stop this corruption. Congress and Panetta is on the ad committee and can do something to help save our wild horses and burrows. What you are seeing on the screen is a wild horse herd area, the Sandwash Basin herd area that belongs first and foremost to the wild horses and burrows, but they have been largely removed so these sheep can have their grazing forage. I would like to read to you from the Wild Free Roaming Horse and Burrell Act, the exact text of the law so you can understand the mismanagement that is disappearing our wild horses and burrows at such an alarming rate. C, range means the amount of land necessary to sustain an existing herd, which does not exceed their known territorial limits and which is devoted principally, but not necessarily exclusively to the welfare. What does devoted and principally mean? It means just that, the wild horses and burrows get first choice of water and forage on their range land. The final stage of extinction is the sterilization of all the wild horses they remove. This is also illegal, but it is being done by Secretary Vilsack, BLM, and the Natural Resources Committee, which gives our tax dollars for this to be done. The drugs used to prevent pregnancy renders the marriage infertile, sometimes for life, despite what BLM tells the public. I have sent over seventy signatures local to Congress and Panetta about utilizing our wild horses and burrows for fire prevention. He can do this under the humane transfer of excess animals, section thir- one thirteen, twenty eighteen, which states that the Secretary of Interior may transfer excess wild horses and burrows that have been removed from the public lands to other federal, state and local government agencies for use as work animals. The heart of our nation is its people and politicians who prevent corruption within government wherever it seeds its deadly presence. Please, I beg you, please save our great wild horses and burrows. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker, uh, is going to be Esther Malkin.
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to, um, point out that I heard that we are having a study session in a couple of weeks on homelessness. And I wanna point out the ongoing, um, mistake of not addressing homelessness prevention through making some affordable rent policy that this council refuses to do. Um, if you guys can't come up with your own versions of it, you need to hire a consultant, just like you do for all these other things that are important to you guys. It's, you know, sixty-six percent of the residents in this city are renters and any suggestion of anything that may help us create reasonable rent protection, you guys refuse to pass. So going with a business license as an alternative, it's just masking what you refuse to actually do, which is help the majority of the, the residents of this city. So when you speak, uh, on ho- homelessness, you need to make it clear in your presentation how you're actually going to pre- prevent it. Because what we've been doing up until now is throwing a bunch of money at it and we're not gonna be able to buy our way out of this unless we end up putting some money into preventing it. And the single best way for more homelessness to be prevented is by creating renter policies. So if you keep kicking the can down the road, no matter how much money you have to pour into shelters and programs, it's not going to help if you don't do anything to prevent people from becoming homeless. And the re- the real reason most people become homeless is because they can't afford to rent a unit and then they can't afford to rent a room. Rooms for rent are going for over a thousand dollars now on Nextdoor when people post them. Imagine what happens to people who can't afford to rent a room at that rate anymore. So I strongly, strongly suggest that staff and council give some serious thought, uh, to the connection of homelessness to affordable rents when you go into that study session on the twenty-third. Because without it, you're only going to be pouring water into a leaking bucket. And it doesn't matter how many times Scott Dick comes along and says that he's been in eviction court every Monday, but that he apparently does for entertainment because he keeps insisting that people aren't being evicted. Just because they're not going to court doesn't mean they're not being evicted. At the end of the day, homelessness rises and it rises proportionately to rising rents. So it's up to you.
All right, thank you. And there are no further hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
We'll close, uh, continued public comments and go right to announcements from closed session. And who would be doing that for us, please?
Yes, so I can announce it on the item number one, which was a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated li- litigation uh, due to significant exposure to litigation. Um, one case, the facts and circumstances that might result in litigation that were discussed were as follows. The city has received a development application to replace an existing hotel and restaurant at two one oh one North Fremont Street with a new forty-two unit hotel. The city has received letters and comments on the project from legal counsel and representatives of the owners of the adjacent apartment complex that indicate that the owners of the apartment complex might sue the city if this project is approved. And on that matter, on a roll call vote of four to one with Councilmember Hoffa voting no, the council gave confidential direction to its legal counsel. And the second item, which was going to be labor negotiations, um, discussion with negotiators, that was not held. that was not held.
All right, thank you. Then we'll go ahead to presentations, and it's always a pleasure to declare March as Red Cross Month, as American Red Cross Month, and it fits in with our value driver of working with our community members. And so, briefly, we have a proclamation, which I won't read tonight, we have a pretty heavy agenda. It honors the volunteer staff and donors who support the American Red Cross. And the community depends on these local heroes to deliver assistance, shelter, food, and hope during emergencies, including the coronavirus pandemic. And of course, not only do they do that locally in Monterey, but it's a worldwide endeavor. And as we watch the tragic events in the Ukraine unfold, we know that the Red Cross is very much involved in that as well. I understand that we do have a presentation from some representatives of the Red Cross, and we're very pleased to have them with us. So I'm going to ask our exceptional city manager, Hans, to take it from here, because it's my understanding we will have a brief presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a great tradition of the city of Monterey that we honor the Red Cross, and for that very reason, also two representatives are here with us as attendees. One of them is John Cromwell, and the other one is Dan Ripke. I believe either one of them wants to speak, so Clementine, if you just tell Dan or John Ripke or John Cromwell to raise their hand and start speaking, please.
Yes, they're here with us, and looks like they are going ahead.
Okay, John, John, go ahead.
Great, hey, it's wonderful to be here with you tonight. Thank you, Mayor Robertson, city council members, it's a great honor to accept this special proclamation declaring March as Red Cross Month. I'm John Cromwell, board member of the Central Coast Chapter. I'm joined by my fellow board member, Dan Ripke, and our CEO, Michelle Avril. I'm incredibly proud to share a few highlights of what we've accomplished together over the past year. We responded to the worst fire disaster our area has ever experienced, a historic blood shortage, and are now looking at how we can take a stand on climate change effects. I believe what may be at the top of our minds right now, as you mentioned, Mayor, is the crisis in Ukraine, and I would like to share an update in regards to the activities of the Red Cross with international Red Cross support. International Red Cross teams are on the ground in Ukraine delivering urgent assistance. Their involvement dates back more than eight years from the invasion in Crimea. As conflict spreads, Red Cross teams are increasing their support across the country and providing first aid and medical supplies to those in need. For our part, the American Red Cross is deploying staff to Romania, Moldova, Poland, and other European countries to support the critical humanitarian relief efforts for Ukrainians. These highly trained crisis responders are supporting on-the-ground relief efforts alongside local teams, including the Polish Red Cross and the Moldovan Red Cross. Back here at home, Red Cross volunteers respond to disaster in the U.S. every eight minutes. Their support is critical, as large disasters like hurricanes, floods, and wildfires crow in frequency and intensity, and with home fires, which continue to upend lives every day. Your local Red Cross alongside county partners provided sheltering, feeding, and recovery to those affected by the recent wildfires, as well as debris foil evacuees from Santa Cruz and Monterey County. And for the recovery effort after the wildfires in 2020, the Red Cross has provided over two and a half million dollars in grant support to local partner organizations who are assisting residents with recovery and rebuilding. Your Red Cross set up a shelter at Carmel Middle School in response to the Colorado Fire in January, proving that our fire seasons have no season, and we need to make sure our community is prepared for another potential dry summer and high fire risk. Now, I'd like to ask my colleague, Dan Ripke, just to add a few more comments regarding other activities, and then we'll wrap it up quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And again, thank you this evening for inviting us to present. Blood services, every two seconds, someone in the U.S. needs blood, and one donation can save up to three lives. Over the past year, our blood supply has become greatly diminished, and we ask that you please support the efforts to build back the capacity and support a local blood drive soon. It's very simple to make an appointment at redcrossblood.org and find a drive near you. Blood sources, resources are at a critical level. Please consider scheduling an appointment today. The Red Cross also is involved with climate change. The Red Cross is committed to doing its part to reduce the current and future humanitarian impacts of climate. We will build the resilience of our organization, as well as the resilience of the communities and people we serve, by adapting our mission delivery and growing our operational capacity to address the heightened impacts and quickening pace of disasters. So, finally, last but not least, is volunteer positions. Every day in Monterey and the regions rely on Red Cross volunteers for support. There are many ways that you yourselves can help your neighbors in need through our positions. A message to all of our city council and everyone listening tonight, if you're interested in volunteer opportunities, please visit redcross.org/volunteertoday. Again, redcross.org/volunteertoday for our most needed positions and local opportunities contributing. So, on behalf of the American Red Cross, we thank you for this proclamation, but most of all, we would like to thank you and many of your city staff members who have worked closely with the American Red Cross over the years to be a better-prepared city for all types of emergencies and future disasters. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, John and Dan, for your service on the board, and Michelle for being here this evening. I thought it was particularly important to highlight climate change and how many challenges that the Red Cross is dealing with, not only the crisis as we were talking about worldwide, the continual forever wars, and the fact that climate change has really changed the whole nature of the Red Cross and its efforts, as well, I'm sure the lack of blood donors had a lot to do with the coronavirus. So on behalf of the entire city council and the city, thank you so much for your volunteers and your outreach, and we're eternally grateful, and we're going to encourage everyone to really donate and volunteer and help the Red Cross, because it could be any one of us who needs your services during the next crisis. So thank you so much. Our next item is a public appearance item, and that's to receive a presentation on the city's unfunded actuarial, hey, I said it, accrued liability pension obligation, otherwise known as PERS liability. And we haven't had an update in a while, so we're really looking forward to finding out what's going on. And when I read the report, I thought, the state of California is sitting on a fifty-billion-dollar surplus. I wonder if they couldn't wipe out the entire PERS liability, probably not, but if nothing else comes from this presentation, and a lot will, don't get me wrong, John, we really might want to be lobbying our legislators and say, hey, you've got the money, this is time to eliminate this problem statewide. So with that, Hans, will you make the introductions, please?
Yes, I'm happy to do it. Our finance director, Rafaela King, was tasked by us to provide you, the council, with an update. We usually do this on an annual basis, or try to at least stick to that rhythm, and unfortunately, over the past two years or so, we didn't get to it for many, many good reasons. So tonight, this will be helping us and helping you also to understand where we are in our pension obligations, and it will also, again, calibrate our future budgets, because as you know, many of our projections that we do over, our five-year projections for sure, includes our CalPERS payments. And with that, I ask Rafaela if she would be so kind to introduce our guest speaker tonight.
Thank you, Hans. So tonight, Mayor and Council, we have John Bartel of Bartel Associates LLC. We've been engaged with them the last few weeks to actually do the presentation. It's one, we've already seen a preview of it, Hans and I, and that wonderful presentation, his staff has also worked with him. So I'm just going to be short and brief and just introduce John Bartel, who has done presentations for us before, so he is back. Can you turn it over and give him the screen?
Great, thank you so very much. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, I'm going to start off with something that might sound a little trite, but I can assure you, it's one hundred percent heartfelt. I, it is absolutely my honor to talk with you all about this, about this issue, and I will do my best to take some, at times seem, complex actuarial issues and put them into, put them into English. So what I have is a PowerPoint presentation. So I'm going to do my best to go through many of these slides relatively quickly. I will encourage the council to interrupt, it'll be a little bit easier for me to answer questions if we do it as we, as we go. So, we're going to talk a little bit about background, sort of how did we get where we are, if you will. We'll then move into the unfunded liability contribution projections for the city's non-s sworn or miscellaneous plan, and then we'll go to the safety plan, and then move to a combined miscellaneous and safety numbers. And then, for me, the most important issue is to think about what, if anything, you want to do to pay down the unfunded liability before being asked by CalPERS. So we'll talk about that. So you all have a long discussion outline, a long PowerPoint, I am not, I'm sure you all were hoping I was going to go every single slide in great detail, I'm not going to do that, so I'm hoping you're not too disappointed with that. What I'm going to try to do is to do twenty minutes on sort of background funded status, and then maybe talk ten minutes about what your options are, including an irrevocable supplemental trust. So, slides one and two really are a definition of terms. For me, the key terms are something called the actuarial liability. If you think of the value of your benefits, both future and past, as a pie, if you look at this pie, the gray shaded area is the actuarial liability, that's the value of benefits that's due to service that's already been rendered. And then you see a piece of the pie just beyond the gray, that's what's referred to as the current normal cost. Think of that as the value of benefits being earned during the current year. So what an actuary does is takes a look at that pie and overlays on top of it the available assets, and the difference between the available assets and the actuarial liability is the unfunded liability. So this overlay, if you will, this portion of the pie is the assets, and then that difference is an unfunded liability. So again, if you kind of think of that actuarial liability as the value of benefits earned, then that difference, that unfunded liability, is sort of what you need to take care of that has already been accrued or earned for both current employees and for retirees. Let me be very clear about this, your unfunded liability for the city, for the state, for virtually all agencies in the state, is quite large, and the question I get asked the most is how the heck did we get here? There really are four reasons for this. One is we've had significant moments of large investment losses. If you go back to the early two thousands, the dot-com bubble really shook CalPERS up a lot. You go to the recession, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, that also had a significant impact on results. And, and then the second item that people don't typically talk very much about, and that is CalPERS contribution policy. Until recently, CalPERS policy was to try to smooth contribution rates, not pay down the unfunded liability. Well, if you have large investment losses, and you smooth your contribution, then you're not paying enough to take care of interest on that unfunded liability. So we're going to see some graphs, and you're going to see the growth in particular of the unfunded liability. So reason number two is CalPERS contribution policy. Reason number three is, of course, enhanced benefits, both for safety and miscellaneous. And the fourth one is something folks don't think very much about, and that is demographics. I'll tell you what I mean in just a moment. Let's talk very quickly about investment return. The green line is CalPERS investment return over the last, you know, twenty-plus years, and what you really see here is, CalPERS does not have a smooth historical investment return. So you take a look at the downturn in two thousand, and two thousand and one, two thousand one, two thousand two, and then you see the returns in eight, nine, both extremely poor. What you also see are some very good years. Problem is, the good years historically have not made up for the bad years. The red line there is the ten-year average of investment returns, and you can see by and large, it's been below the discount rate that CalPERS uses. Discount rate is what the expected return is going to be into the future, that's that blue line. If you look at the average return, though, over a long period of time, twenty years, right about six point nine percent, and eight point three for a thirty-year period. So, around the state, Monterey is no exception, there is a large retiree liability compared to active. So the state average is, of the total liability, fifty-six belongs to retirees for miscellaneous, sixty-five for safety, for the city, it's sixty-five percent of the liability, almost two-thirds of the liability belongs to retirees rather than active employees. And if you look at slide thirteen, back in two thousand, what, three hundred and sixty-two, active employees, and you only had a hundred and seventy-eight folks receiving a benefit, and then you go to twenty years later, the number of active employees has decreased to two hundred and forty-nine, the number of folks receiving benefits, four hundred and eighty-eight. So you went from a ratio of two to one, active to retirees, to one to two, active to retirees. That difference makes a big impact if you think about saving for your own retirement. Very simply, the closer you get to retirement, the more conservative you get in your investment mix, you don't put it all in highly conservative investments, but you have a tendency to be more conservative. Why? Because if you're planning on retiring a year from today, your tolerance for investment volatility is much lower than it is if you're thirty-five years old. And so the entire CalPERS system has a, has little tolerance for high investment return or investment return, so every time there is- So every time there is a downturn in the market, it really has a significantly adverse impact on the, on the numbers. Slide 14 is the same information going back to 94. The red bars are the active employees. The blue bars are the folks receiving benefits. And you really see that relationship shift over, over time. Unfunded liability, so under CalPERS, your miscellaneous plan, you have a total actuarial accrued liability. Value of benefits due to service that's already been rendered for active, or excuse me, for, at June 30, 2020, of $290,000, $290 million. You had about $191 million sort of sitting at CalPERS. So that difference, 98.8 million, is your unfunded liability for the miscellaneous plan. That's that 66% funded ratio around the state. The miscellaneous plans on average were about 72% funded. So you're a little bit farther behind. The significant reason for that is because of the maturity of your miscellaneous population, if you will. Slide 16 shows this information again, but what we've done is we've taken that June 30, 2020 information and we've rolled it forward to take into account the very good investment return at June 30, 21. So what you see here is a reduction in your unfunded liability from 99 to 78 million. Why? One good investment return. So I, I, I don't want to be flip, but all you need is another four 21% returns to get rid of that unfunded liability. I'm not suggesting you ought to plan on those returns by any stretch of the imagination. What I will also tell you is your unfunded liability varies based on the discount rate, the anticipated future investment return that CalPERS uses. So they, in the June 30, 2020 valuation, they used a 7%. They're going to a 6.8% discount rate. But what we wanted to do is kind of give you a feel. If you use that seven, that's your 98.8. But, um, this is probably an unfair statement because someone from CalPERS is not here to tell me I'm wrong. I think the maturity of the population warrants being a little more conservative with investments than CalPERS is. And to give you a feel, if CalPERS went to a 6.5% discount rate, we estimate the unfunded liability at $116 million. So if you're going to earn a lower return in the future, you have to make that up some way. And the way you make it up is with higher contributions to pay that unfunded liability down. Similarly, if you went to six, your unfunded liability grows to $134 million.
John, I have a question.
Of course.
And Albert, how do they come up with the, with the discount rate? What, what are they measuring? How do they measure that?
What, what they do, so I'm going to give you the short version of this. But what they do is they look at the investments they have in the fund and they, the actuaries, take that information and they say, okay, we think in the future inflation is going to be, I'll just pick a number, two and three quarters, and the real rate of return for bonds, which might make up 50%, 55% of the fund, might be on top of that, two and three quarters, might be another seven percentage points. On the other hand, they have bonds, which today are not earning much more than inflation. In fact, in the short run, maybe there's an argument that will earn less than inflation. So what they do is they take that information, they project into the future anticipated returns, and then they look at that to come up with the discount rate. Now, nothing is uncomplicated at CalPERS. So what I've just described to you is a normal way of coming up with the discount rate. CalPERS, though, being the creative folks that they are, have an additional step. The additional step is, well, what happens if we change the investment mix? What happens if we make it a little more aggressive? Let me give you two very important points that are, I don't have slides for, but under CalPERS investment mix that they had for the 2020 valuation, when they did their study, their capital market study to come up with the 7% discount rate, what they did was use assumptions from investment advisors about in, in the, you know, 2018, 2017 period. When they looked at those assumptions, they came to the conclusion that if we don't change the investment mix, that 7% discount rate probably would need to drop to six and a quarter. You can see here by looking at the six and a half and six, that that six and a quarter discount rate would dramatically increase your unfunded liability and dramatically increase your contributions. So the investment folks thought about this hard and said, oh, let's just, I'm being a little simplistic here. CalPERS would not say it quite like this. Let's look at the investment mix and come up with a strategy that might be a little more aggressive, but get us to a higher discount rate than the six and a quarter. So they came up with a investment mix. The board adopted it, and so they are going to a 6.8% discount rate as part of the June 30, 2021 valuation. So I know that was a longer answer than you were expecting. I apologize for that.
That's okay. Thank you.
I, I will absolutely tell you, Slide 20, if you, if you take nothing away from this presentation, other than Slide 20, it is the, in my mind, the single most important picture you ought to have in your bed. Here's what it represents. The red bars are the liability, the actuarial accrued liability, value of benefits due to service that's already been earned. And the green bars are the assets. You see a couple of fascinating things about this. It almost does not matter what the economy does, what investments do, what your number of employees are. Those red bars just keep going up. It's a constant, if you will, increase over a period of time. And what happens with the green bars? The green bars go up and down based upon investment return in a particular year. This is the phenomena of, of not being particularly conservative as your population is aging. Let's just kind of take a look at a, a couple of them. In 2007, your assets and liabilities were almost exactly equal. That's this bar right here. And then you go to 2008 and 2009, the investments decreased, your assets noticeably over that period of time. So your unfunded liability, 7, about 76, excuse me, $66 million. So you went from having virtually no unfunded liability to having an unfunded liability of $66 million in two short years. And then, when you look at the relationship between the red bar and the green bar, between the liability and the assets, you see very little change between those numbers. Why? Because this, over this period of time, CalPERS did not aggressively, in fact, ask you to pay down a interest on that unfunded liability. Your payments were lower. They have moved away from that. You can't really see it yet in the graphs, but I think you will begin to see it over time. I have an expectation that depending upon investment return, your unfunded liability will begin to be noticeably decreased over the next 15 to 20 years without anticipated high investment return. Slide 27 is really a projection of your contribution relative to payroll over the next decade or so. Slide 28 is a much longer presentation. In fact, when you, what you see is your contribution begins to go down beginning in that 36, 37 year. That's the point in time at which you really are making significant inroads to paying that unfunded liability off. Now, let me tell you what you're looking at on Slide 28. The solid green line, what we did was we did a series of what we call simulations into the future based on anticipated CalPERS investment return. Those, that green bar is what we refer to as the 50th percentile. So four R thousand simulations, 500 are above the green line, 500 are below the green line. The hollow squares, that's the 25th percentile. What that means is 25% of our projections got to contribution rates above where the hollow squares are. And 75% of our projections were above where the solid squares are. So what you do though see is a noticeable trend to where your, your contribution will be noticeably lower, but it won't be lower for another 20 years. But you're moving absolutely in the right direction. That is partly due to CalPERS' change in the contribution policy. Now, because I'm taking a little bit longer.
Yeah? If you could go back to the last slide for me, please?
Sure.
And if, so just kind of playing a scenario here, you're saying without us doing much of anything, that we're going to be moving in a good direction within about 20 years. So could you describe why it's important for us to take action now to address some of these issues? I imagine that being a little bit aggressive upfront allows us to not lose investment over time. But I, I'm just wondering if you can describe that a little bit more for me?
Yeah, I'll, I'm, I'm, I promise you I'm going to answer that question. But I want to preface with a, a little caveat. And my caveat is, I am a, a fan of looking at your debt, and the unfunded liability is absolutely a debt, and thinking hard about it. I am not an elected official, so I can't set priorities for you. I can't tell you whether you should spend the money, any money you have on this versus something else. I can tell you, if you set money aside for this, it will put you in a better position sooner. That's number one. The other thing that it will do is, the thing that I am personally most worried about pensions in California is that the nature of the maturity of the population. A lot of retirees come, you know, in, and a relatively aggressive investment mix at CalPERS. To the extent that you set more money aside, depending upon where you put that, you can mitigate that a little bit. You can't really mitigate it a lot because, but you know, let's be clear here. CalPERS sets the investment policy. They don't ask you about it. You, 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 your investment policy is a function of what they tell you it should be. But you have, if, to the extent that you apply some money to this, the odds are excellent. It will earn a higher return than, than your own investment funds would be. And you will move where your contribution begins to decline. You will move that to earlier years. And so my opinion is you will, you will save money by doing that. But again, there are lots of competing interests for the money that you have. And so you won't hear me say, and I'm qualified to tell you, you need to do this. I will just tell you that if you do it, it will save you more money. We'll quantify a little bit later about how much it would, would save you. So did that answer your question?
It absolutely did. Thank you very much for that response.
Right.
Mr. Bartel, before we move on?
Yeah?
One quick question. So could you clarify, is the reason why the line eventually closes and why, in theory anyway, that we would eventually reach an equilibrium, maybe in 20 years? Is that because of the increased cost sharing that city and employees are both being asked to pay by CalPERS?
No, no. So let me say this, you know, if you were, if you were looking at your own budget, if you were, all, most, this is an unfair statement, but most people who are 25 or 30 don't look at their own budget. So I'll pick on them just for a moment. And you've got a credit card debt, and you've got a car loan, and you've got, you may or may not have a home mortgage, but you have a variety of debts that you have to pay down. Maybe you borrowed some money from somebody else. What, what's going on is, if you look at that debt, if you pay off one of your components of your debt, you see your person, your personal budget frees up a little bit. The amount of money that you're sending to the debtors declines. What you really see in the green line here is the line declining because you, the way CalPERS charges you is they look at different events. Benefit improvements, investment losses, assumption changes. And what's going on here is you are gradually wiping out some of those debts. And, and your amortization period, the period over which you're paying that debt is a bit shorter than 20 on average, but you get rid of most of those big debts. If CalPERS earns by and large their assumed return over that period, if they don't, your debt goes up and your contributions go up. And that's the 25th percentile, if you will. But that's exactly what's going on. If you're doing what, I'm confident pretty much everybody on the council would tell a young couple to do, and that is look at your debt, figure out a way to pay it down, and, and, and look at it. That's exactly what CalPERS has done for you. If we were doing, if we were looking this projection four years ago, before CalPERS had made their contribution policy changes, that green line would not be coming down in 20 years. It would be continuing for a long period of time. The kind of the equivalent of minimum payment on your credit card. If you make the minimum payment on your credit card, thank you very much, you don't pay that puppy off over a long period of time. And so that's really what CalPERS is doing now. They're making you pay interest plus principal.
John, before you, before you leave that, I would imagine that levels off because of Pep, Petra, Pepper too.
Yeah. So Pepper has a noticeable effect. If, if we had not had Pepper, what would happen is that it would have leveled off, but it would level off at a higher rate. So one of the things, it's a little hard to see on these numbers, but when you look at the position, point it levels off at, you actually see that be continuing to decrease. And the reason it's decreasing is 20 years from now, you will have a lot fewer of your classic employees, the non-Pepper folks. So as Pepper employees... So as Pepper employees gradually get in there, they begin to have a positive impact. But, you know, Pepper's been around for less than a decade now. We're just now beginning to see some noticeable positive impact for, from Pepper. But it's, it's, kind of my comment about Pepper is, it would have, would have been great if it had happened thirty years ago. But we're sitting here at twenty, that's better than never. That's for sure.
Do you think there's any movement at all about further revisions to Pepper, further reductions in pensions?
Yeah, I am probably not the right person to answer that question, but I'm gonna give you my best answer, very unlikely.
Yeah.
Now, let me also tell you, when you look at the Pepper formulas, you know, I'm not a big, I was not a big fan of the enhanced formulas. When you look at the Pepper formulas, those are reasonable numbers. If you had always had those around, you probably wouldn't be calling us very much, because your unfunded liability would not be what it, what it is today. But you didn't. And so that, you can't undo that. And, and so it, the fact that it happened a decade ago is better than it, than it never having happened, if you will.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, John.
Okay, I'm gonna, just, there, there's really one thing on this particular slide that I want you to see. What we're doing here is that green line is the same green line, the fiftieth percentile. But what I'm trying to show you here is what makes up that green line. And there really are three things that make it up. Thing number one is how much credit are you getting from your bargaining agreement? So in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, reduces the city's contribution two point two. If you go out to thirty-two, thirty-three, we're projecting that to zero point nine. Why is that decreasing over that time? The answer is, is because it's only the folks with the enhanced formula that are making that higher contribution. And as time goes by, more and more of them retire. So you have less and less of a, of a contribution, if you will, from that. And then slide thirty, same information, but we're looking in dollar amount. So the twenty-one, twenty-two, the current fiscal year, you've got a five hundred and eighty thousand dollar credit, if you will, and your total contribution is about ten point nine million. We're projecting that ten point nine million to grow to about eleven point eight over the next decade. But the contribution, the, the cost sharing, if you will, drops from five eighty to two fifty-seven. And then if we go to safety, safety, we have a, an information gap, if you will, from safety. There are some years where we don't have all the information, but we can go back to ninety-nine, and in ninety-nine, you had a hundred and one active employees. You had a hundred and thirteen folks in payment status. And then you go to twenty-twenty, you see the number of actives go up and the number of retirees go up a lot. So it is not changing quite as dramatically as your miscellaneous group, but it is absolutely changing. You have a large number of people in payment status compared to active employees, similar to miscellaneous. Again, we don't have a lot of historical information, unfortunately, from the safety plans. But you can kind of see the active employees sort of growing over time and the number of retirees growing a little more rapidly. Funded status for the safety plan, liability two hundred and eighteen million, assets a hundred and forty-three, unfunded liability about seventy-five million, sixty-five point six percent funded, compared to other agencies around the state, about sixty-nine percent. Again, that seventy-five million, in the June thirty, twenty-one valuation, we are expecting that to drop to sixty million dollars. So it's about the same twenty percent reduction as there was for miscellaneous. So again, I don't mean to be flip. We're in a particular year where our expectation is June thirty, twenty-two investment return. We might be happy if it's zero. So don't expect that sixty million dollars to be wiped out by high investment return anytime soon. Yep?
John, if I can just, two, two questions or points is, social security is facing the same problem. So historically, you had more active workers and fewer retirees. And so the active workers deductions were actually going to pay for the retirees.
Right. That's right.
And so what's happened is basically that whole ratio has changed. You have fewer active working people, more retirees. So you can't count on that resource anymore.
That's exactly right. And so we, we could talk for a long time about social security and Medicare and, and what solvency means, but I will tell anybody who will listen that Congress needs to do something yesterday.
Yeah.
Not today, yesterday. And the longer they put it off, the harder it will be to do something, the more painful it will be to do something.
Yeah, that's right. And then we're, you're painting a scenario or actually telling the truth in that we've, the, the stock market's been booming. And as a result, our assets, so to speak, that's the money that CalPERS keeps on our behalf, that the city has invested over the years. So with the stock market booming, you're looking at really high returns. But looking at my own very small portfolio, being a retired teacher, I can also see it decreasing. Because I don't have any, I don't have any control over my assets either. They're in mutual funds and so on. And so we're at the mercy of the stock market, more or less, with respect to unfunded liabilities.
That's right. And, and, and I guess what I would say is, it is the stock market, but it's CalPERS decision as to how your money is invested in that stock market. That's absolutely right. You, you don't have any control over any of the green bars here.
Right.
So again, seven percent is that seventy-five million. Six and a half percent would be an eighty-nine million dollar unfunded. Six percent would be a hundred and three million dollar unfunded liability. This is the safety version of that graph I liked so much on miscellaneous. For me, this is not quite as sexy as the miscellaneous graph. Why? Because we don't have that historical information. What happened was CalPERS moved your safety plan into a pool with other folks, and they didn't, for several years, provide that detail information that you have for miscellaneous. Contribution for, for safety, in some ways a little similar. We're projecting a little bit higher contribution rates with that fiftieth percentile. And, but we're still showing your contribution at the fiftieth percentile dropping dramatically over the next twenty years. Same reason as for miscellaneous, if you, if you will. Again, your, the message here on slide forty-nine is that blue line, you're at about three point two percent reduction in the current fiscal year, that three point two drops to one point five over the next decade or so. Dollar amount, similar, in some ways, because the safety plan is, you know, it, it, these numbers are going up a little more rapidly than miscellaneous. In some ways, the safety numbers might be, from a budget standpoint, a little more problematic, if you will. Slide fifty-three shows the combination of miscellaneous and, and safety. The purple line is the miscellaneous projection. The brown line is the safety, and the blue line is the combination of the two. So from a, a budget standpoint, these are the total numbers, if you will, for all funds that, that you, that you have to figure out where to, where to get money for. Combined unfunded liability, at June thirty, twenty, you were ninety-nine, seventy-five, hundred and seventy-four million dollar total unfunded liability. We are projecting those numbers to go to seventy-eight, sixty, one thirty-eight in total. But a hundred, if you, if you think about this for a second, this, this, you know, the fact that your unfunded liability is dropping from a hundred and seventy-four to a hundred and thirty-eight, absolutely good news. But what I want you to do is, in, in, in this next statement, sometimes when I make it to councils, it can be a little depressing. If, if you just had a million dollars sitting there, you know, you didn't know what to do with it, and you go, oh, let's pay down our unfunded liability. Your hundred and thirty-eight goes to a hundred and thirty-seven. And so a, a single contribution of a million dollars does not generate much excitement or reduction. However, if you said, well, let's come up with a, a policy, and let's think about what your options are, but I think you have to ask two questions. Question number one is, where do you get the money from? Easy question for me to ask, because I don't have to do your budget. And the next question is, how do you use it? What you, what do you do with that money if you find a little bit? So where do you get the money from? There, you know, today, there is a lot of interest by public agencies, particularly in California, on pension obligation bonds. My comment about pension obligation bonds is, I'm not, you're not going to hear me say, don't do it. What you will hear me say is, if you go down that path, be one hundred percent certain you know what you're getting in for. So pension obligation bonds, you're borrowing money at what is today a relatively low rate, and you're giving it to CalPERS. There is no guarantee that CalPERS will earn more than what you're paying on your, on your debt. You know, there is a GFOA advisory that by and large says, don't do it. Now, I will tell you, I think that opinion is a little too strong. I think there are scenarios or situations where a pension obligation bond might be worth looking at very closely. We are in an environment where borrowing rates are very low. I think they're going up. And if we were talking about, you know, before the stock market kind of had, had some hiccups over the past few months, we're in an environment where investment return was particularly good, interest rates were really low. If there was ever an environment where you might want to think hard about that, that was the environment. It's not clear to me we are still in that environment. But I have to tell you, I'm not qualified to, to give you that kind of advice. But, but a lot of agencies in the state are looking carefully about this. I would say, be careful. The other option is, you might have in your general fund, a reserve for something you really don't expect to be using anytime soon. There are cities, I don't pretend to know the legality of this. I don't pretend to know whether or not, from an accounting perspective, this makes sense. But the state, for example, is kind of using money, borrowing it from the general fund and using it to gradually pay down their unfunded liability. The other thing, a fair number of folks are doing, I, I have to tell you, I am a personal fan of this. If you go, oh, we're going to be getting some one-time money, let's just have a policy that says if we get one-time money, we're going to use a third of it for one-time projects, a third of it to increase reserves, and have a third of it to pay down the CalPERS unfunded liability. You're not going to hear me say, I know a third, a third, a third makes sense. That's just kind of an example, if you will. I would encourage you kind of think a little bit about. If, and then, once you figure out where you're getting the money from, the next question is, how do you, how do you use it? Where do you put it? And one area that was quite popular several years ago, I am not a finance guy, but, you know, if you set up an internal service fund and put money into that fund, you are likely going to earn very low rates of return, because that money is by statute that required to be invested in short-term, high-quality instruments designed for preservation of capital. And you could take money out of an internal service fund and use it for something else. It also does not really reduce your unfunded liability. You could make payments directly to CalPERS. If you think about this from a long-term investment strategy, it is likely the best approach. You will have volatility, though, because of that increased investment risk that CalPERS has. You should consider any money you give to CalPERS. You can't go back and, you can't say, give them a million dollars this year, and then next year go, oh, remember that million dollars we gave you? Can we give you a million dollars less this year? No, they won't, they won't buy that at all. And so you need to think about it as irrevocable decision. I really think there are three legitimate options if you're going to give the money to CalPERS. Option number one is-
John, John, could you, John, would you hold up a second? Could we go back? When you were talking about general obligation funds?
Yep.
Basically, it's, if I can use an analogy, one that my small brain can understand, it would be like paying off a credit card with your IRA.
Yeah.
But sooner or later, you have to pay back your IRA.
Yeah.
And so you're creating another debt in order to pay the first debt.
That's right.
Right. And then if you turn that money over to CalPERS, once again, it's outside of city control.
That's exactly right. All of that is right spot on.
Then the second one is the, the rules that you were talking about Pepper, where it says Pepper can't be below normal costs. Where is that one?
Yeah, let me tell you what I, what, what's going on there.
What, what does that mean exactly?
Yeah. But, but if, if you, if you go back to, well, wait a minute here, let's see if I can. So let's go to, let's go to this slide. So this is your safety contribution. When we showed you the project, projection, that green line way out here twenty years from now will be at or close to the orange line. That, what's going on here is that UAL payment, that amortization payment, is really going down to virtually zero. If you have your contribution equal to the normal cost, you paid off all of your unfunded liability, and CalPERS has a poor investment return, CalPERS will say, sorry, you now have an unfunded liability, you have to make an additional contribution. But if they have a good investment return- But if they have a good investment return, what will happen is they will say, we still want you to pay the normal cost. So once you get to the point where your unfunded liability is paid off. Your contribution can never drop below that normal cost rate. The, the, you know, you, you, that money will be in your account, can be used for future poor investment returns. You just can't access it in the short run. The actuary in me thinks that is a silly, silly rule. You're gonna pay off your unfunded liability when you have poor returns. You get a little bit of a credit, maybe not a short. Maybe you ought to not be able to use that excess up over a short period of time. But maybe you use it up over a long period of time. The, the way I kind of look at this is, if you had something, if you had for, for your own personal budget. If you inherited a hundred thousand dollars. And that put you in a situation where you didn't have any debt. Once you wiped out your debt, you would not be able to access the remainder of the hundred thousand dollars. So it's a knee-jerk reaction to some things CalPERS did in the early two thousands. Uh, but, but that's what that, um, that, that's, that was like, clear, clear on that?
Yep, thank you. Very good. So you were gonna talk about our options.
Yeah, options under CalPERS. Um, uh, you really have three options under CalPERS. You can go to CalPERS and request a shorter amortization period. In other words, you take all of your debts, all of your unfunded liability. And you go, oh, I'd like to pay it off over a shorter period of time. I've got a million dollars and I'm gonna, I want my contribution to be. Um, a, a million dollars higher, because I'm gonna pay those amounts. What, what will happen is, on that green line, the point in time at which your contribution drops to be. Uh, equal to the normal cost accelerates. So, um, uh, you have higher short-term payments. You know, less interest, lower loan payment. You, you, if you make, if you go to CalPERS and request this. We have yet to hear them say, oh, sure, you can go back to your old amortization schedule. They will just not do that. They may change their mind in the future. I don't think so then. Uh, the other, the other option is you can make what CalPERS refers to as additional discretionary. Payments. So, uh, kind of a one-time payment. You can take those amounts and target specific amortization periods. So again, if you go back to the, um, you know, if you're a young couple and you've got a car payment. You owe twenty thousand dollars on your car and you have a washer and dryer payment. You owe a thousand dollars on the washer and dryer. Uh, maybe the car payment is lower than the washer and dryer. The washer and dryer is set to be paid off over a couple of years. But you get a thousand dollars if you pay off that washer and dryer. You're paying off the shorter amortization period, if you, if you will. Um, uh, and that's the target specific amortization basis. You pay off the shorter amortization pay, you have a larger contribution savings over a shorter period. Eventually, that washer and dryer payment is gonna go away and you're gonna have to pay that car off. If on the other hand, you give money and pay that car off. You, you're, you're taking care of debts that have more interest on them. Uh, and so financially, in the long run, you're better off, but your budget is impacted less. So in the, in these examples, but, but, uh, ten, if you pay off a ten-year amortization base. It reduces the contribution eleven point nine cents for every dollar you, you pay. But if you pay a twenty-five-year amortization base, reduces the contribution less. Six point two cents for every dollar, but you get that reduction over a twenty-year, twenty-five-year period. So you end up saving more money by paying off a longer amortization base. It's all a function of, what do you want? Do you wanna see a bigger reduction now, or do you wanna see the longer-term savings? And kind of the third possibility relative to the additional discretionary payment. Is maintaining the current payment schedule. In other words, you give them money, but you don't reduce the budget that you were gonna pay. So if you had eleven million dollar contribution scheduled for next year, you give them an, a million dollars. You still pay the eleven million dollars. What that does is that, uh, again, accelerates your, uh, amortization. It really gives the greatest long-term savings. Um, and then, uh, the other option to giving it to CalPERS. I am, um. Probably shouldn't say it quite like this. I'm a bit of a fan of this approach. It's not a perfect approach, depends upon what you're looking for. But it, you, what happens is, you were allowed under Internal Revenue Code, section one fifteen. To set up your own irrevocable supplemental pension trust. So you have a million dollars. You, uh, uh, put money into that one fifteen trust. You can use it only for two things. You can pay yourself back for contributions you've made. Or you can make payments directly to CalPERS. So let me say this, if you go back to that, um, option of setting up and, you know, an internal service fund. Uh, for that, investing in, this is that option. But you have the ability to invest in more aggressive investment mix. It's not limited, um, to the, uh, city's, uh, investment policy. So investments are less restricted. Fiduciary result, ru- rules govern the trust investment. And it's usually designed for long-term returns. You could design it for short-term if you wanted. Um, however, the bad news is, your GASBEE accounting, your statement seventy-five. These are considered employer assets and it would not reduce the unfunded liability in your financial statement. Now, having said that, if you had an unfunded liability of a hundred million dollars. And you've got fifteen million in a one fifteen trust, in your footnote, it talks about the hundred million, you go, this is a hundred million. The, we also have this fifteen million dollar trust sitting over here. The accounting rules don't allow us to, to offset that hundred million. But if you're reading this statement, you know it's irrevocable. We can only use it for that. So we really think the unfunded liability is eighty-five million, not a hundred million. If you could make a statement like that in your financial statement, uh, that mitigates the fact that it really would not. Um, uh, reduce your GASBEE accounting rules. There are really four of these trusts around the state. This bullet is, I'm sorry, a little out of date. I should have made this change. Uh, there are more than three hundred and fifty trusts in the states now set up. Most of them are with PARs, more than three hundred. Um, PFM and Keenan also have trusts and CalPERS. Just, uh, set up their own, uh, one fifteen trust. Uh, they're still quite a ways behind the folks at PARs. Uh, but they're, uh, certainly getting, getting some action. And kind of see, they give you the option of investing money conservatively. Or a little bit more aggressively, depending upon when you think you might need to access that money. So, I, I, I'll say it again, kind of a fan of this approach. Uh, it gives the city the most flexibility, uh, and, uh, uh, but. In the long run, I don't think you would get the, uh, type of return that CalPERS will likely get. The stock market drops, you know, if the stock market drops, it's gonna have an impact on. The stock component of, you know, any one of these trusts that you set up. Uh, what we're seeing is funding strategies typically fo- focus on reducing the unfunded liability. I, I will absolutely tell you, for me. The, the biggest value of these is to mitigate budget volatility. So, uh, I, I think if, you know, if you go back and look at the graphs. Uh, there will be volatility in what your contribution will be. If you've got ten million dollars sitting over here to help you with that volatility. I think that makes budgeting so much easier. How, having said that, I've said that to a lot of clients. By and large, they ignore what I say. So, and so they, uh, they really are looking at it as a. Uh, you know, to make the total unfunded liability zero.
Mr. Bartow? So just wanted to kind of clarify that point. So let's say in any given year, and I'm just gonna make up a number here. Let's say we owe, um, CalPERS thirty million dollars. And, uh, you know, that's, that's the city's contribution, as it turns out. And, uh, we got twenty-eight million, but we're short a little bit. If we had one of these irrevocable trusts that had ten million in it over, that had accrued over a period of time. What you're saying is, when we needed it, we could draw upon it. So in that particular year, if there was a two million dollars that we were having trouble to budget, that was our contribution. We could draw from that irrevocable trust that particular year and apply those funds that year. So when you're saying it gives us budget flexibility, that's what you're really talking about, right? That we're gonna be you, drawing upon those funds when we need them, when there's difficult budgets for the city.
Right, spot on. That's exactly right. So for me, that's where I think the value of a fund like this is. And, and it's not sitting in city, um, investment. So the expected return is gonna be noticeably higher.
I think that on that point, John, the, the state regulates, I believe. After, what was it, Bell or one of the Southern California cities got into a bunch of mischief? So the state actually regulates, um, where, where city investments can go. And what our return, our maximum return can be, and it's pretty low.
That's right. It's exactly right. However, they don't have the regulatory authority over this. Now, you can't invest in, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm not an investment advisor. I'm not an attorney, I'm not lots of things. But I don't think it would be wise, for example, to invest in cryptocurrency. Uh, uh, that might not meet the rules that you need to comply with relative to a one fifteen trust. Okay. So, i- if you decide to go down a one fifteen trust option. I think you have to think about again, how much can you put into the trust? Whether it's initial seed money or additional amounts in future years? And how do you take that? In other words, have a strategy for how the money is gonna go in and how you, how the money is gonna come out. I really think, thinking about both of those. Uh, when you set up the trust is a prudent approach to a trust like this. So, uh, comparison of the options, supplemental trust, one fifteen trust is flexible. CalPERS, you're locked in, uh, likely lower long-term return in a supplemental trust. CalPERS, a higher returns. You get to choose the investment strategy with one fifteen trust. CalPERS does this for you. Um, does not count supplemental trust does not reduce your GASBEE recording liability. Giving money to CalPERS does. A supplemental trust is more visible. You can kind of raise your hand and say to people, look, we have. Whatever that number is, fifteen million, twenty million, set aside in the trust. Um, to, to deal with this unfunded liability and we're gradually doing it. Once you've given money to CalPERS, people have a tendency to not remember that. So I think it's less visible and a little more restricted, if you will. So all of these are kind of my op- opinion, if you will. If you were thinking about doing this, you wanna, you wanna think about which of these is really most important to you. I, I, I've been talking for a long time, kind of apologized. Gonna go through the next slides with your permission a little quickly. They, these are just examples of what you might do. In fact, what I'm gonna do is just kind of show you. If you had a million dollars, remember your total unfunded liability. Uh, kind of dwarfs a million dollars. If you, um, if you put a million dollars, you have to think about how you would split that between miscellaneous and safety. For purposes of this conversation, we're assuming you're splitting it relative to payroll. That means a five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar contribution for miscellaneous. A four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar contribution for safety. And if we look at how much money you save, you, if under miscellaneous. Give them, you give CalPERS five hundred and sixty-three thousand, you save fifty-eight thousand. And if we take those savings, some of which occur in future years and discount them back to today. It's a thirty-one thousand dollar saving. So you would hear me say that short-term base, um, is not particularly efficient. From a miscellaneous standpoint, a little more efficient from safety. Because your shorter amortization bases are longer than they are for miscellaneous. Uh, on the other hand, if you pay off the longest base for miscellaneous. Uh, you save, you give them five hundred and sixty-three thousand. You save seven hundred and four thousand. You get to a present value savings of two hundred and ninety-three thousand. That's a pretty nice savings relative to a five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar investment. And similarly for safety, because they don't have those really long amortization. Their bases are a little more compact. Lo- longer, the shorter bases are longer and the longer bases are shorter. Uh, and then if you have no payment reduction, the big savings here, give them five hundred and sixty-three thousand. The present value of your savings is seven hundred and forty-five thousand. What that does is that means you're not, you're giving them money, you're not reducing, reducing the, uh, contribution. So you're not helping your budget, but you end up giving them five hundred and sixty-three thousand. And you're really saving seven hundred and forty-five thousand in interest, if you will. Um, if you set up money in a one fifteen trust. Again, that same five hundred and sixty-three thousand, four thirty-seven. And you target a flat contribution rate. You, uh, give them, you put that money in the trust. You pay yourself back when the contribution rates get higher. So you save two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Um, we're expecting you would earn about five percent in the trust, rather than the higher return from CalPERS. Present value of that savings, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, a hundred and thirty-four thousand for safety. And then if we look at scenario number two, scenario number two is, you don't just give a million dollars now. You give a million dollars a year for each of the next ten years. And so your total payment for miscellaneous over those ten years. Five point six million, four point four million for safety. Uh, again, these are similar kind of relationship. Again, these are similar kind of relationship numbers. So I promise you, I love talking about this stuff. Happy to keep talking. But that's the end of my presentation. Happy to answer any more questions you folks have.
All right. That was very educational, John, and actually put into, to words and concepts that I could understand, especially when you talk about somebody's own personal debts and cars and washers and dryers. And that really helps, I think, someone who's not in the business, understand this whole thing. Any more questions before we go out to the public? We have a question from Councilmember Tyler. And let's do questions only, please.
Yeah, so, and I would just echo your comments, Mayor. And this is to the 35-year-old on the council. You made it very understandable, so I appreciate that. And I'm going to try to keep my questions limited here because I know that we don't have terribly a lot of time. But I feel like the council may deserve a full session on this. So you were sharing on your slides in the last few scenarios there, how if we did the long, you know, long-term versus short, the shorter term versus the, you know, no reduction in payment at all. To me, that scenario, that last option seems like it's the best, right? It presents the best present value savings today. And again, to the 35-year-old in the council, that seems like it's a good thing for our, our community and for our constituents. So I'm wondering, why would we not want to go with that option versus going into a trust and looking at the longer or short-term payments?
The reason is flexibility. And so if you, once you give money to CalPERS, they're, you know, it's not going to generate flexibility for you. And so to the extent that saving money, you know what? This is an unfair statement, so I'm going to apologize in advance for it. Many of our clients think of, if the world was perfect, saving the most money would be by far the best approach. And what you've just said is, that's from a long-term perspective, the best approach. I 100% agree with that. The problem is that once you give that money to CalPERS, if you have, if we have an earthquake, if we have something exciting happen that is not planned for, then flexibility might be more important. So the reason you guys get the big bucks is because you have to sit and think about what those options are and which one is really best for the city. The only reason the 115 trust is one I'm a fan of is because I've worked with public agencies in California for a long time. And we get more calls when the news is bad than we do when the news is good. Kind of wish I could tell you the other way around, but it's not. And so what I'm saying is, if you put this money into the 115 trust, you're really going to have to think less about those sorts of things because you'll have this nest egg sitting over here. Is that the best financial? If you're looking at just the financial decision, is that the best option? I personally don't think it is. I think you're right spot on. If you're looking at 30 years from now, you know, paying those longer amortization bases will help you in the, will help you in the long run.
So we could, this will be my last thing before I wrap it up here. You could do, we could do an option where we do maybe five, we take half of that and we do a direct payment. And we take the other half and we put it in the trust. And that way, we're maybe taking a moderate approach.
That's exactly right. I personally think that's a wonderful, wonderful approach.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate this.
Very good. Councilmember Ed?
Yeah, I just, because there's so much of the math that's going to come into play here, I just wanted to follow on that other point. John, is if you, if you front-load an account, as if, you know, we took a million now, and the next couple of years, by policy, councils decide that any excess each year that they want to designate to go to the 115. But were it to be advantageous for us to say, okay, in year five, we're sitting at five years or 5 million plus interest, and we say, okay, now our million, we want to pay some of this to PERS now, and then only a portion of it go to the 115. Front-loading it to the 115 has a huge advantage, does it not?
Oh, oh, well, so do you mind if I answer that now?
And the other part of that is, it has a huge advantage because you built up the, the bank in the bucket. And then also you still have flexibility in years coming.
So I will suggest you, so I'm going to apologize again.
You can be bored at nine o'clock at night.
I was, I was a math major, but I was also an English major. So, so a pretty funny combination. But English is particularly important here. So if you want the most flexibility, I 100% agree with that. Front-loading into the 115 trust would get you to a better place. If, on the other hand, you said, no, I want the financial advantage. Then you would do it the other way around. You would give more money to CalPERS upfront and less to the 115 trust. It would give you less flexibility, but it would give you a high, likely, a higher financial advantage in the long run. It would take a while for that to materialize, but I think that's it. It's, it depends upon how you look at this. If you look at this from a flexibility standpoint, I like the idea of front-loading. If you look at this from a pure financial position, I don't. And so if you, if you kind of split, split the difference, you get, you get to that suggestion from Councilmember Williamson of 50/50. That does not make everybody happy. Doesn't make the people that want the financial position happy. It doesn't make the people who want the flex, most flexibility happy. But it kind of fits in that middle. That's a crummy answer to your question.
No, it's, it's an excellent answer because it solidifies the two choices that I think we'll be talking about is, you know, security or flexibility. Spot on, spot on. Thank you.
Other questions before we go public? All right, let's go and see if we have some public comment and we'll come back for discussion.
So, Mr. Mayor, there are no hands raised.
All right. So at this point, Hans, what you need, this is a presentation. I'm not assuming, I know the staff will be bringing back during the next budget cycle and the next several budget cycles, some of these options as outlined so well by John. So what would you like to hear from us this evening?
There is a little unannounced test how the public safety liabilities increases at a discount rate at 6.5%. So, no, that, that was probably a joke that didn't go well over. We don't need anything from you right now, counsel. Mr. Bartel has outlined exactly the things that we asked him to do, and it's food for thought. And your questions were very, very helpful for all of us, including your staff, because we as staff also have not really made a decision yet what we would recommend to counsel over the next couple of months. So I just wanted to let you know, for us, it was also a great learning opportunity together with you, and we appreciate all the help that Mr. Bartel gave us tonight.
Good. Any final counsel comment? Anyone? Councilmember Tyler?
I just wanted to jump back to one of the things that you were mentioning earlier, Mr. Bartel, in regards to folks in their 20s and 30s being more willing to make risky, riskier investments, which I think is generally a true statement. But I think one of the things that we're seeing and that we have to be really careful of is we're seeing a lot of volatility in the market. And so I, I'm a federal employee. We have what's called a Thrift Savings Plan that we invest into. And with all this going on, I started throwing all my, my investments into the government bonds because it just kind of made me nervous, right? So I just think it's a, it's a word of caution for us to even be a little bit more careful about how we go into addressing some of these issues because we really don't know what the future holds. And I think that there's a lot of uncertainty and instability in a way that we're not even, I think, really realizing in today's time. So I just kind of wanted to throw that out. And then I'll, I'll end with a question, which is, what do you see as the state's role or potential action that they're doing? And I say more specifically with the state legislature in regards to helping a lot of local agencies in addressing some of these issues? Do you, do you see a path forward? Do you see a role for them to play in supporting us and getting out of this sooner rather than later?
So I'm going to answer that question. And I'm going to do what I've kind of done with several questions. I'm going to give you my caveat first. You know, paying attention to the legislature is not something, that's not really in my job description. Having said that, it just kind of goes with the territory. So I pay attention, but nobody should pay attention to my answer. I think not a snowball's chance. The legislature will do anything to help public agencies with their CalPERS unfunded liability. That's my opinion. I, I can't imagine a scenario where they would voluntarily do something. So, and I also can't imagine a scenario where anybody is going to require them to do anything. So I think this is kind of an unfair statement, but I think this, they will say, sorry about that, but this is your problem, not ours.
Fair enough. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Allen?
Um, yeah, I, I hope that staff will bring back this, this discussion as we get into the budget. To me, it seems prudent for us to pursue some strategy along these lines. And we do often, not always, but have one-time monies that are unspent at the end of the year. One-time monies, I think, are particularly appropriate for this kind of savings account, this, this kind of pension savings account. So I, how much that should be, you know, should it be a third, 50% or more? I don't know. I think that's a conversation we'll have to have at another time. But to me, that seems like a very easy thing to do. Their one-time monies, you actually budgeted and didn't spend, spend to take some of that and put it towards a long-term liability makes a lot of sense. I'm somewhat, definitely want to be clear, I would not support a pension obligation bond. Basically, what you're doing is borrowing money and hoping that you invest it and make more money than the interest you owe. That's a very risky proposition. And it may work out great, and when interest rates are low, it's probably a good bet. But basically, you're gambling. And I just think that the obligation we have to our employees to fund, fund these benefits is something that you wouldn't want to take that kind of a risky bet on. So, but I, and then as far as whether, you know, you, you paid down with CalPERS or whether you put it into a 115, I'm somewhat open to either of those. There are benefit, cost benefits to either. So anyway, I look forward to continuing this conversation. Thank you very much.
Very good. So anyone else?
Yeah, what I would like to see coming or going forward is, I'd like to hear Raffiella's perception and help us guide the decision because really it's a policy decision, it's on us. But what we're doing at a future policy action would be setting in motion a long-term plan for councils in the next 10, 20, and 30 years. So I think we need to have a little bit more instruction in terms of this question of the risk versus the payoff of an immediate return, giving us the flexibility or versus security. And, and you know, some of this really makes a lot of sense. I guess as somebody who's not 35, I used to be at one time 35, we all were. But the, the lessons that we always had from financial advice was plan on the unpredictable for the future, create a system where you have lots of buckets, manage the buckets, manage whatever risk you can so that you have flexibility for the future because you, you know that you can't look at the interest you earn today is always going to be the same as next year. And the conditions of the world force things to happen. So you want to always have flexibility as you move forward. So I'm intrigued at the possibility of looking deeper at the irrevocable trust and how we manage this going in the next five, 10, 20 years. Because the decisions that we need to create are things that give a greater comfort level for the security of the city in many years to come.
Yeah, well said. Anyone else? All right, we'll probably be seeing you sooner than later, John. Again, thank you. Raffiella's rolling up her sleeves and going, I'm going to be investing some money. Show me the money. And we really appreciate how, how fiscally smart this council is and fiscally smart our city staff is. That really helps us. Let's take a break and see everybody at 9:05. And welcome everybody back. All right, 9:09. We were always thinking that was a pretty amazing presentation and a lot of food for thought, lots of numbers. And when I was talking about our staff being fiscally sharp, I certainly meant it, and a council too, several of you with experience as fiscal officers managing businesses, negotiating for your unions. You get, you get the money, you understand how things work. So that really does help with the decision-making. Next thing is to authorize some letters to the Water Management District, Monterey One Water, the Governor, State Water Resources Control Board, California Department of Housing and Community Development, and AMBAG. And so we have quite an extensive staff report, very interesting. It kind of explains the whole frustration there, which we are having with, which finding water for affordable housing, which the city of Monterey is, has owned, and we have people ready to go with it. So that could be a large discussion unto itself. But I'm just hoping we can focus on just authorizing the letters and see if But I'm just hoping we can focus on just authorizing the letters and see if we can get some movement on these state levels. So if we can remember that's that's what we're talking about, and then we can talk about affordable housing, which we do a lot. But this is really focused to see if we can get some movement out of these agencies that are really counter-indicative towards one another and see if we can get some movement here. So with that, back to our exceptional city manager.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had an elaborate introduction planned and was hoping that I could give this at about eight forty-five or eight thirty, so I will cut that very short. My my introduction to this topic is basically reminding everyone of an of an old fairy tale that Hans Christian Andersen, a Danish author, poet, described as the emperor's new clothes. And when you look at the water questions in front of us, it is very mindful of of the emperor's new clothes, where basically two two swindlers go up into an emperor in a huge capital city and say, hey, we can weave you the most beautiful clothes. And they are so beautiful that only people who are stupid will will be not able to see them. But people who are very, very smart, they will say this will be the most magnificent clothes. And they say, and that they start weaving those clothes. And of course, they are not doing anything, but everyone is fearful to say to anyone, even the emperor, when he looks at the progress of the work, to say, but you're doing nothing. No, no, because you don't say anything about that because they are only invisible to those who are stupid or incompetent. And so that's kind of the fairy tale. Finally, a child during a procession where the emperor shows the new clothes is is telling the truth and saying, hey, the emperor has no clothes on. And that's kind of what we face with water. And that's kind of what we face with Rena also, where we are getting housing goals presented to us of three thousand six hundred and fifty-four houses, homes to be planned for. And people think that, oh, yeah, they they will build those homes, but nobody tells really our constituents. The emperor has no clothes on. And so tonight, we want to try to break that story. We want to, we want to come, we want to be the ones who say, look, help us to 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 get us the water. And with that, I I ask Kim to introduce the letters that we intend to send out. As the mayor stated, the 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 topic is multi-dimensional and very complex. So our presentation tonight and our request to you and the public is let's focus just on the letter, letters and and send them out and hope that we will have impact with them, that they will hear us, that somebody gives us water. Otherwise, we still will be like the emperor, running around in in nothing, and everyone pretends it's something. So with that, I give it to Kim, please.
Well, before Ken starts, I want to thank you for one of your more interesting introductions to a city topic.
Um, thank you, Hans and the council. I just have a few slides, and I think they're summary level slides of key points we want to make in the letters. We're asking to send letters to multiple agencies. And our goal is to heighten the awareness of water supply needs to meet Rena and to identify lost opportunities. Request information on when water will be available. Ask what the city council can do to make this water available. And request that multiple boards adopt resolutions requesting that the state Water Resources Control Board lift the cease and desist order. I've got five background slides here. I think it's important to note, while this cease and desist order has been in effect for a long time, there was a pivotal change on December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one, when there are no more unlawful diversions from the Carmel River that are allowed. So all diversions have ceased from, but the CDO remains in effect. And what that results in is we still cannot set any new water meters. And it's an inability to fully use water credits that may be available within the water district. Hans mentioned the Rena. This is the lack of water supply is coming at the exact time that our regional housing needs allocation was dramatically increased for the city of Monterey to three thousand six hundred and fifty-four units. So there are aspirational goals that we build housing, but to build housing, we need water. So we did a an analysis of how much water do we need for those three thousand six hundred housing units? If they were all one-bedroom, one-bath or one-bath units, we need three hundred and sixty-seven acre feet. If some of them are, or if all of them are two bedrooms, it's four hundred and six acre feet. And we need that by two thousand twenty-three because we have between two thousand twenty-three and two thousand thirty-one to construct the required housing. We are experiencing lost opportunities while we don't have water. Projects are having to be downsized in order to work with the onsite credits that are available. And I'm just going to point out, the council's well aware of Garden Road, but we've permanently lost out on the opportunity for a hundred and eighteen additional housing units within that area. We also have the opportunities for city sites. We have four city sites. We're working with nonprofit housing developers for a total of a hundred and fifty low-income units on those sites. Without water meters and water credits, we're not going to be able to build those units. So in summary, our goal is to make those points to the various agencies and request authorization from you tonight to send those letters, so we can hopefully gain momentum ultimately in obtaining a water supply for your our region. That concludes my presentation.
Thanks for taking a really complicated subject and hitting some really nice points, made it very clear. Council questions? Go to the public. All right, let's see if there's any public comment, please, and we'll come back for questions and comments from the council.
Hi, yes, we've got one hand raised. It is Vanessa Diffenbaum. Please go ahead.
Good evening, council and city manager. It's nice to see you this evening, quite late. I just wanted to call in today and just speak in support of the city's letters that they've authored. I really believe that Kim worked hard to complete, complete a very compelling picture of the challenge that the city faces in terms of water, which, as you just mentioned, is really conflicting direction from the state. One is that they can't set water meters, and the other is that they must build housing. So I, we are in full support of your effort to resolve this problem. And I'm here today not only as a neighbor, and many of you know, I'm very involved in the public schools here, but I'm also here because I'm a project manager for MidPen Housing. And we are the Affordable Housing Developer, that was awarded three of the four city sites. So to that end, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Those Rena numbers, I I imagine, are quite intimidating for the council, specifically that low and low in lowest income category, that's nineteen hundred and forty-six units. So I imagine that feels really overwhelming and perhaps even unattainable. But I just wanted to mention, which I I have mentioned to the council before, that the city of Monterey is really uniquely positioned to successfully win a very competitive process for tax credits, which is how we can finance those city units. So our preliminary analysis shows that we could do about thirty-six units at the Madison Van Buren site, which would take about three point six acre feet of water. We could do twice that at the Caye P site. And especially the Van Buren site has some really nice things going for it. We believe we could do a pretty low local funding gap to fund that. So I know those aren't huge numbers of units, thirty-six, you know, sixty units. But I would just say that, you know, my husband's a big sports fan, and people like to say, you got to get points on the board. And I really believe that there's an opportunity here because of the tax credit financing system and the way that they value high resource opportunity areas, which the city is. And we all know that the state changes priorities all the time. And so I'm here to just urge the council to really focus on that low and low income, lowest income category of your Rena numbers because you have an opportunity through the tax credit system that really might not be around forever. And MidPen really is standing by to be your partner on this. And whatever questions or support you need to try to make that happen, we're really here. So thank you very much.
And, Mr. Mayor, there are no more hands raised for this item.
Oh, good. Well, thank you, Vanessa, for your input. We appreciate that. All right, council questions? Ready to move on this? All right, Councilmember Dan made the motion. Councilmember Allen made the second discussion. Councilmember Tyler, please.
Just wondering, has staff reached out to any of of our stakeholders in regards to the formation of these letters? Like the Water Management District? Has there been any input in regards to the formation of the letters from anybody else?
So I consulted with the water district on all of the calculations that were created, as well as, you know, some of the background assumptions in the letters. And so they helped verify water unit counts and and the math and how I came up with that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Help answer that too as well. Councilmember Tyler, being the mayor's appointee on the Water Management District. We actually just had an update at on a water demand subcommittee meeting. And our GM is very active in meeting with our city manager and the state stakeholders and representing, presenting the same information and rationale as you heard in our letters tonight.
Okay, and and I would just add on, I've talked to Hans about this in in our check-ins with each other. But with the Monterey Peninsula Housing Coalition that we've presented to the council in the past, we have a Water for Housing Task Force, and we have two lines of effort that are going on there that seem to be somewhat in alignment with the with the letters that are going to be sent out. And and one is Dave Stolt has has helped draft a letter that that Senator John Laird has submitted to the State Water Resources Control Board to request a water workshop to have a conversation about, mainly around condition two and loosening up that that policy a little bit. And then the goal there is to invite HCD so that the state-level agencies can be having that conversation with each other. Because it really just makes sense that they're speaking somewhat of the same language from a statewide perspective and for them to be in the same room having that conversation. So that's one thing that we're waiting to be scheduled. It seems like it's going to be moving forward, but I don't have a date yet, and I'll be sure to keep staff posted on that. And the other thing was this idea that some of us as housing advocates reach out to HCD directly and have a direct conversation with them about the the need, just to have a more direct one-on-one conversation. So they've, they're gonna pull a couple of stakeholders together from HCD, and we'll have that conversation. But really trying to get them to understand that, hey, there are local representatives here that really do want to find ways of producing housing. We really want to find a way of meeting our goals and and to Ms. Diffenbaum's point, right, really start getting those numbers on the board. And so getting them to understand that and and seeing that we're not just trying to get in the way of of providing a pathway here hopefully can really help them understand the need around condition two again. So just wanted to kind of help paint a picture here in regards to some of the other additional efforts that are happening. And and I'm glad that we're doing this, and hopefully it helps kind of move the needle here. So thanks, Steph, for putting this together.
Yeah, well, thanks for that, your comments, Tyler. I appreciate that. Councilmember Ed.
Yeah, I just, I'm going to support this motion. I think it's the right time to to do this. I just want to point out something that is pretty significant for the viewers and those that may be watching this on replay later. Part of the process this council went through last year was to meet together several times and develop refreshed value drivers. And we added, and I'm going to read it because it's important, to champion regional and local efforts to secure adequate, affordable and sustainable water sources for the city now and into the future. So I I think that the timing is right for this letter. It's bold, and some would say, you know, it's a it's a shotgun approach, trying to get everybody and trying to get attention. And I would say, yeah, that's exactly what we're trying to do, is get the state and all the agencies to pay attention to how how we are basically handcuffed until we get some movement. And so having additional meters, having recognition of the available water that we do believe the city of Monterey has in light of the large number in the process of Rena, we've got to do something and be bold. And as you know, I serve this council and as the AMBAG representative. And I've mentioned it before, the process dictated by a lot of the state rules and the constraints that we had at AMBAG to select the the choice of many choices with the formulas we had from housing and community development is maddening. And so we are left with this very high number that I think is unattainable. However, it does not mean that we should be dissuaded from tackling the problem and getting the water meters that we deserve so that we can continue with the housing that we so desperately want. So full force behind it. And I hope we can get some attention at the state and have some other agencies stand behind us. And we should trumpet the fact that this council has declared that it is a value driver that we hold near and dear, that that we are advocating to have the water that we should have for the city of Monterey. But thanks, thanks for listening.
Well said. Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yes, that motion carries five zero. City managers' update on COVID-nineteen response efforts. This will be a report and presentation. So back to you, Hans.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me pull up my screen here right now. Okay. I'll keep it short and brief, council. I'd like to highlight something here. Two years, two days ago, we declared the emergency declaration and shut down the sports center, the library, the conference center, et cetera. So that was two years and two days ago. What what we have seen over the past couple of weeks, dramatic reduction in the number of daily cases in the United States. This chart tells the story just the best way. You see the relationship between the outbreak of of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. April two thousand twenty first, first numbers increased. And you see, you you see for yourself the dates and how the curve has developed. And you see that really the worst thing that we had right now was the Omicron variant, and you see how that has developed. What you see also in the next slide is that the number of the daily deaths does not really correspond with the previous chart. You know, you see a spike in numbers, and you would see, assume that more people will be dying of that. But what what it basically tells you is the story of that the vaccines are working, that the boosters are working, keeping people out of the hospitals, and keeping people also away from dying. And you see, of course, the story of the mostly unvaccinated right now. Here in Monterey County, our numbers are falling as, again, falling as well. Unfortunately, the 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 county changed there, the kind of metrics. And I just spoke today with another resident who, like me, follows those numbers pretty religiously daily. And and we kind of lost a little bit our sense for the numbers because now also the data gets reported twice a week, and it's a new format. But in essence, again, overall, the numbers are also encouraging and trending in the right direction. What has changed since the last update I gave you two weeks, four weeks ago? We have a new mask policy in place in the city of Monterey, which basically follows the California Department of Health guidance. Face coverings are strongly recommended for all persons indoors, regardless of vaccination status. That applies to all our facilities, whether we are operating at Hilltop Center or the sports center, the library, or the conference center. I can tell you that that my own I can tell you that my own observation around City Hall is that most of our employees are still meeting masks and also helping customers wearing face masks. So, it's absolutely okay to do that, and then we actually encourage employees to do what they feel is, for them, the best comfortable way of dealing with meetings or with the public. The numbers, Community Hospital as well, it had a real spike that was kind of worrisome in January, February, but the numbers are trending down, and we are glad to see the numbers develop that as well. In other news, we stopped the vaccination clinics. Basically, no one wanted to come anymore, or the numbers were just so dismal that it really wasn't worth for us to get our team out there. We conducted, overall, since we started this, the vaccination clinics, which which we started actually for public safety in December 2020, and we conducted over 113 clinics, we administered over 8,045 doses of vaccine. And on the right-hand side, I'm sorry, I clicked it already away, you saw a cherry blossom tree. That is the area where a year ago, we planted three trees in memory of all the COVID victims, but also about the public health officials and the other essential workers that were helping us through the crisis. And I can share with you, all three trees are still alive. Unfortunately, not yet blossoming, but hopefully soon you will see them there with all the cherry blossoms. So, that concludes my short presentation for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions before we go public? All right, any public comment?
There are no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you for the update. Let's go to our public hearing, and that's to deny, the recommendation to deny appeal and uphold the Planning Commission decision to deny a variance for fencing at 301 Casa Verde Way. And before we get any further into it, if I may, just outline the process. In a moment, I'll ask if there's been any ex parte communications, and just simply means any talking to anyone outside of this forum right now. We'll have a staff presentation that will be followed by the appellant. We can ask both staff and the appellant questions as needed. We'll go to public comments. The appellant would have an opportunity for closing remarks, and then back to the City Council. So, first is ex parte communications. I did not talk to anyone, but I did drive by, and I looked at the site on my own. So, did anyone have any ex parte, and which is fine, we just have to let the public know if anyone met with the appellant or anyone on this topic. So, this is the chance to share. Councilmember Ed?
Drove by the site, did receive an email, a letter, and a phone call from the applicant, but I did not communicate, did not respond. But I did see the site on my own.
Okay. Councilmember Dan?
Same thing with me. I got exactly what Ed got, and I went by the site.
Yes, I think we probably all got the invitation. I think we all probably pointed out that since this is a public hearing, that any comments have to be made at the council meeting. All right, so let's go ahead then for going back to our process, and that would be staff presentation. And once again, we have our extraordinary Community Development Director to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mary. Let me just share my screen. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
I'll take that as a yes. So, as the mayor introduced this afternoon, you're considering, or evening, but at this point, considering the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny a fence variance. I just want to give a couple slides on general background. The city fairly regularly receives complaints about fences being constructed that do not meet the city's height requirements. I think we get at least one a month, if not two a month. The general requirement for residential fences is four feet in the front yard setback, which is along that front property line, and typically somewhere between 15 and 20 feet back. And then along the remaining sides in the rear, you're allowed to increase the fence height to six feet. There are some exceptions to that, corner lots, fences above retaining walls, and reverse corner lots. The project that you see before you is a fairly typical process where the city has received a complaint about a fence that appears to be over height. They contact the city's code compliance coordinator, and with that follow-up, the applicant or the property owner has two options. One is to reduce the height of the fence, or they can apply to go through a variance process. This applicant applied in July of 2021 for a variance, and the Planning Commission denied that variance in December. So, this is the project site. It's located at the corner of Casa Verde Way and Encina. You can see the fence is, it ranges, it's about six feet tall across the front of the property and along the side of the property going down Encina, where both of those frontages should be four feet in height. This just gives you a better viewpoint. And then it jumps up at the very back to seven feet 10 inches as it incorporates or encloses the a trash facility for the site. No matter what you do this evening, I do want to point out that we need to resolve, if this structure stays, the door cannot continue to be able to screen into the sidewalk area for safety. So, there's a lot of findings for variances. Some of them are established in state law and apply to all variances, and then our code goes a little bit further about some additional considerations for fence variances. And the classic way to describe a variance is, the same rules apply to everybody. So, if we're going to make an exception as a city, you need to have a good reason, and those reasons need to be based on the characteristics of the property. And probably the most commonly used example is maybe you have a residential lot with a stream that traverses the middle of the lot, and that if you built the house where it's supposed to be based on setback, she would destroy the stream. So, it makes sense to move that house away from that site, you know, that site characteristic, or that thing that is causing this property to be treated differently than all others. And that's really the finding that the Planning Commission couldn't make. If you look at the size of the lot, it's relatively similar to other lots in the neighborhood. The shape of the lot is rectangular. It's a flat lot. There's very little topography. It's located in a residential neighborhood, fairly similar to a lot of properties in the neighborhood, and all of them have a fairly similar surrounding. So, there was not a finding that the strict application of the requirements deprived this property owner of something that everybody else enjoys. I do have to say, the second finding, I don't think anyone thought that the fence variance was detrimental or injurious to the property or to the area. But I think there was a general feeling that the granting the application would constitute a grant of special privilege, that this lot isn't really that different than any others, and didn't qualify for a variance. So, it was primarily on that reason the Planning Commission denied the fence variance. Our city code goes a little bit further. You only have to meet one of these findings, and I think the Planning Commission said, yes, it does meet these findings. They didn't think it appeared as a visual barrier. You know, it's setback, it's not blocking anybody's views at the corner. And it's sort of cat a corner to some commercially zoned properties. So, once again, in summary, the major issue the planning had were these three findings that we apply and are required to apply to all variances, and they couldn't identify the special circumstances that made this R3 lot different than all others. I know that this is a side issue, but it came up at the Planning Commission level, and so we went out and did a little bit more work on this issue. And I know there's a perception that the neighborhood, there's fences all over the place that exceed the four and six-foot requirement. I think what we did here is we went out and looked at it and surveyed the neighborhood, and we identified where fence heights do exceed six feet. What we try to make sure is that new fences going in do not exceed the fence height requirement, and so that we're, over time, bringing the neighborhood into compliance. I'd also like to point out that some of these fences, you know, it's not necessarily across the front that you see a lot of them. You see it down the sides of the property. You may have a side of a fence that comes six feet to the corner, but the front, the actual front property line may be at four feet. So, I think this is helpful because it shows you where are those fences that exceed six feet, and that we hope to phase out over time. So, staff recommends that the council uphold the Planning Commission decision and deny the appeal. And if you do deny the appeal, we will be requesting that the property owner bring the fence into compliance with the city code. That concludes my presentation. I believe Steve Mickel is on the phone, and he has a presentation that he forwarded to me that I can share when he comments.
All right, questions for Community Development Director? Allen, please. Councilmember Allen, then we'll go to Councilmember Dan.
Yeah, the image of the fence, it looked like, you know, there's fence, and then there's a kind of lattice work at the top of the fence. Do you know about how high that is? And I guess the reason I'm asking and thinking about bringing it into compliance, it seems like it wouldn't be that hard to sort of remove that lattice work, but I'm wondering if that would, removing that lattice work kind of on the top, would that bring it into compliance?
It would bring it closer. So, the overall fence ranges from five feet 10 inches to six foot 1 inch. And I didn't measure the exact height of the lattice, but I think it's about a foot to maybe a foot and a half in height. It would get it a lot closer if the lattice was removed.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Dan, please.
Thanks. Thank you, Kim, for the report. You mentioned about corner lots. Where, how does that move into the ordinance again? I didn't quite catch that, because isn't this a corner lot?
It is. Are you asking what are the finite, or the
The first slide you mentioned about that some lots, if they're corner lots, if they're on street level or whatever it was, I can't remember exactly, but I thought it said something about a corner lot. If you can bring that slide back, that'd be great.
Sure, I can do that.
Maybe I misread it.
There's exceptions for corner lots, and so I can describe those to you, but let me
That's what I want. Yes, exactly.
On this graphic, what those are. So, this is going to be a little bit of a tuss, but I hope I can explain it. Can you, on the corner of Portola Avenue, and behind it, Encina, you see what we call a normal corner lot, which is where the front yard setback is along the shortest, most frontage, which would be Portola. So, Portola would have a four-foot height requirement, and then along Casa Verde, you could jump up to six feet. The same is at the corner of Encina, you could jump up to six feet, but it would be four feet across, I guess along Casa Verde, it would be six feet, and along Encina, it would be four feet. So, if the, if the corner lots are back-to-back, one single lot, it's four feet in the front and six feet on the sides. Now, there's something different called a reverse corner lot, which is at Encina and Casa Verde, where there's that little red line. And the city's fence regulations say there that the fence height along Encina and along Casa Verde should be four feet. And then outside of the setbacks, you can jump up to six. And the reason for that is if you look next door, there's a lot, there's like these single-family lots with four foot, so they don't want a six-foot fence right next to somebody's required four-foot fence. And I hope that makes sense. It's sort of, it's difficult to explain.
Yeah, it's easier to see it on a map. So, thank you. That describes it. I have two more questions. The other question is, the garage enclosure, that's seven feet, and so what do they have to do with that garage enclosure? Is that still considered a fence, or is it a building?
It's an accessory structure, almost at that point, and so it doesn't, they, so they originally, they've always had their trash there, and they had it enclosed with a you know, a four-foot type fence, which was in compliance, and it still shielded the trash from the street. When they increase the height is when it doesn't comply. So, that's why they're asking for the variance.
Yeah, so you're saying that that, that structure is going to have to be taken down, not down, but down to four feet, then?
Correct. They would have four feet all along Encina and four feet along Casa Verde.
I wasn't sure if that structure was part of the fencing or not, that's all. So, I know I see a lot of houses in Monterey that have hedges in front that are higher than six feet. A hedge is not considered a fence, correct?
Correct.
I would think. Okay, so you, so they could put a hedge in to block whatever they necessarily for security or whatever it is, I would think. Okay, that's the questions I have. Thank you.
All right, other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Ed?
Kim, could you put up the photo again that's showing the side of the yard as, and it's showing the sidewalk? I need that visual in front of me. Slide, yes, slide. Is it five? Yeah. So, is there any elevation behind the fence on the yard that on the resident's side that is accounting for height? And when the city looks at this, do we look at the ground level from the sidewalk, or do we look from the inside of the yard to measure the height?
So, if we had a sloping lot, we would look at the most restrictive of the two. This is a relatively flat situation, so I think the sidewalk up four feet is, you know, or up six feet, I guess this shows it six feet one, is the correct place to take the measurement on this site.
Okay, and as you were explaining before for Mr. Albert, the corner being Encina and Casa Verde, correct?
Correct.
And so Encina is considered the front of the house. And to this picture we're looking at, is the front of the house on our right-hand side, or where that car is parked?
Because this is a reverse corner lot, the city fence requirements would require it to be four feet on both Encina and Casa Verde Way. And then to answer your question more specifically, I would need to go to this drawing. So, by city code, the most narrowest frontage is the front yard setback, so that would be along Encina would be the front, and along Casa Verde Way would technically be the side.
Okay, and so, talk to me more about the origination of the ordinance that talks about different corner properties. Is that relatively new, or has that been around a while? And what's, do we have any idea what the theory is behind why we treat a reverse corner differently?
So, it's been that way since at least 1991. So, when our city code was, I'd say, the last major update of our city municipal code. So, it's been the same set of regulations for a long time. And to explain, I'll try just to explain this again. If you have a corner lot with one corner here, and the other, and they back up to each other, then you can have four feet in the front and six feet on the side. to each other, then you can have four feet in the front and six feet on the side, even though it's adjacent to the street. If there are, and I'm going to pull them apart. If you have lots in between that face the street and these would be four feet front yard setbacks, then the city code requires that on the sides, it's four feet as well. So you don't have a six foot fence next to an interior lot with a four foot fence. And that's actually what we have, you know, in this area as well. Is a reverse corner lot.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mayor, I have one more question.
Yes, council member Dan.
So you said you surveyed the, or the staff surveyed the, the area and there were some fences that were out of compliance. So if we deny this appeal and we, we, we require the, the property owner to take the fence down, I would assume immediately or where within, are, are we going to go around to all those fences and let them know?
No. So we have, if you think about our neighborhoods, especially New Monterey, we have a lot of non-conforming fences that may have even been built prior to 1991 or a long, long time ago. And so what we do is as new fences are installed, we, you know, hopefully they come and ask us first and we go through all these regulations. So that's, that's like, you know, the best situation and we try to bring the neighborhood into conformance over time. And most of our fence enforcement is quite honestly complaint based. And we get neighbors who want to see their neighborhood improve visually over time. And for a lot of them, the appearances of fences make a difference. And they would like to see houses address the street with generally four foot fences. And they would prefer properties aren't walled off from the street. I mean, I think that's like the general thought behind it. And then that's counterbalanced by a lot of property owners, maybe living on a street that has higher traffic volumes and maybe they didn't anticipate that level and they're not real happy with that. So we're usually in the middle of that discussion and we implement the city's fence regulations.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Kim, a question, when I was looking at the fence and it has the lattice work on top, is the lattice considered part of the six feet or not?
Yes, it isn't. We don't make a differentiation in materials.
Okay. Or the fact that it's open or airy?
Correct.
Okay. So it is considered part of the fence. Okay. Thanks. All right. So at this point, we would hear from the appellant. And did, Kim, did you explain to me that you're going to be making the appellant's presentation? I didn't quite understand the next step.
Oh, I have, so because he's accessing the meeting by telephone, I, I can show his presentation as he walks through it. So that's, if you could unmute Mr. Mickle, then.
So we'll welcome Mr. Mickle to our meeting and I'm sure that the two of you will coordinate this beautifully.
So Kim, I have, I clicked the invite to talk. Oh, there he goes. He's unmuted. Perfect.
Hello?
Hello, you're coming in loud and clear.
Okay.
So Steve, if you can just tell me when to forward, the council should be able to see the presentation now.
Okay. Mayor, council members, my name is Steve Mickle. I was the original applicant for Tom Cutino. Just to set the record straight, I did not build this fence. Mr. Cutino is a long time client of mine. And he called me up after he got notified by code enforcement. And so I went and saw him just because of our relationship, why he walked me through the property and I understood his concerns because I have a piece of property two blocks up the street that I have the same issues. So obviously this is a picture of Cutino's property. There's been a lot of problems with thieves, homeless, people camping. Tom even had someone build a bonfire in his, I think it was in the back of the property one night. You can go to the next slide, Kim. Hello?
Yep. She hears you, she's working on it.
Oh, okay.
It's on the next slide.
We're still seeing the original one right now, Kim.
Really?
Yep.
That's weird. You see the new one now?
Yes, we are.
I'm not sure why that is.
Okay. So the, the issues here is tenant safety and security. And of course the fences, there's a lot of fences over height in this neighborhood. Uh, there's no visibility obstructions at the four way stop sign. And Public Works has confirmed that. Uh, Mr. Cutino felt that the lattice work on top was a little somewhat open for law enforcement to see in there. And the fence does help somewhat reduce engine noise. And I'll get into that a little further. Next slide. This is a letter from one of Mr. Cutino's tenants that he had a bike stolen, a brand new, real nice bike prior to the fence being built. And there's been issues with homeless people that he's encountered at the dumpster. And they go through looking for recyclers, bottles and cans, and they just leave the garbage everywhere. Then of course, the next few slides, you can kind of go through real quick, Kim, there are just other fences in the neighborhood. And I eliminated quite a few of the pictures to, to make this a little more streamlined. But all these fences you're seeing are, are over four feet. And some of these are up on Casa Verde. Staff had a bunch of fences down on, like Byright Market in that area there. Some of them not too good looking as these ones on Helvick. More of the same. So this is just a recap of the intersection that there's no, no obstructions. The plans I drew also had a couple of Google views from above with cars illustrated on the intersection and arrows with line of sight, showing that there's plenty of visibility when people come to the intersection. And I've driven that myself in my, my vehicle several times. There's no problem whichever way you're coming to see a person at the opposite stop sign for safety. This was a video that we're not going to do because I think we've clarified the question about obstruction. There is no obstruction. So it's a busy street and noise is a problem too constantly with, with the video showed cars constant from early in the morning to late in the evening. And when you're at a stop sign, big trucks, motorcycles, cars with loud mufflers, they come to the stop sign, they take off. It's kind of annoying. I get the same complaints on my place up the street on Casa Verde. This is my property up on Casa Verde, 359 Casa Verde. The photo on the right, I had to install a little wire fence, I don't know, six or nine months ago. They had a homeless guy living behind that bush. I've got three single women there and it became an issue. So I guess he got the message and moved on. And then there's also a kind of a hedge you can see on the right that I, I planted to try and not cut down the traffic noise also. This is looking down my driveway. I've had homeless people camping behind the trash enclosure. Trash left behind, human waste. And when you get events like the fair concerts, it's even worse with people just walking down the street, throwing their trash on my property and I don't have a fence. So I have a one lady tenant that's constantly picking up trash constantly. It's never ending. Uh, next one. This is a letter from one of my tenants. She's actually the one that's always policing and picking up the garbage and again talking about homeless. She went down to get in her car one day, one morning, go to work, there was a guy sleeping in her carport. Not very safe for anyone in apartment, let alone a single woman. And she's had to clean up her share of human waste also. So these are the reasons I got involved with Mr. Cutino was to, because I could see the same issues. So in the city Monterey fence height standards, you've got to meet certain conditions to for consideration for, for variances. And part A, you have to meet at least one of the conditions. And we meet two of them. It's a, a street with significant traffic and noise and the property joins or is across from a commercially zone property, which kitty corner is the auto repair place. And then next to that is Byright Market gets very, very busy during the lunch hour. And then good sandwiches though, by the way. Part B for the variance requirements. Required distance for vehicles is not obstruction. That's for this, the, the site visibility that applies to us. And the fence heights are compatible with character of the neighborhood, which that applies to us because of the number of other fences in the neighborhood that are over four feet. I'd like to read something in the original staff report prepared by Christie Sobio that went to the planning commission there and that her analysis. I'd just like to read the summary of it. Due to, due to the location of the subject property, which is located on a corner lot, there is likely a higher level of traffic than other residential streets in the neighborhood. Staff visited the site and witnessed a high volume of vehicles passing through Encina and Casa Verde way intersection. And again, this is constant all day long. The property, which contains multifamily units, does not enjoy the same privileges of, of privacy as other residential zone lots in the neighborhood. The lights from vehicles turning at the intersection shine light in the apartment complex at night disrupting residents. The existing non-compliant fence would allow the tenants of the property to enjoy the privileges of privacy and be able, be able to avoid the intrusion of lights into the residence apartments that other property owners in the same zoning classifications enjoy. Furthermore, the property has experienced theft on the property and non-residents, i.e. homeless camping out on the property. The property owner is trying to create a safe environment for families to live. And it goes on to say that granting the fence height variance would not be determined, excuse me, would not be detrimental or injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity of the development site or public health, safety or general welfare. Public Works has reviewed the existing proposed fence site and has determined the fence would not create a traffic safety hazard. And this is all from staff, the staff's analysis. Then it goes on to say that granting the variance would not, it's not consistent with the Monterey zoning ordinance. And this would constitute a grant of special privilege. But I ask you, since when is privacy and safety not a special privilege? So those are Mr. Cutino's reasons for pursuing this variance and appeal is for his tenants and his protect his property. And I'm the same way with my apartments. I like to keep the places clean and safe for my tenants. So they have a, a nice home. That's about all I have. I know Mr. Cutino has a few things to say. Any questions?
Sorry, I'm muted. Any questions for Mr. Mickle from the council? No? All right. Then Mr. Cutino wanted to speak. So Clementine, can you, but he would be part of the, the appellant, I think, right? Not, yeah, okay. So he would be part of the appellant's presentation. So can we let him in, please?
I don't see anyone on the meeting with that name.
Okay.
I know he was on the Zoom. He just needs to unmute probably.
So I, I don't, there are only five attendees and they have other names. I don't, I don't believe he's with us at the moment.
Oh, he was earlier. I don't know what happened.
All right.
I have a question for staff.
Yeah, well, all right. Go ahead and make that part of your presentation and we'll get an answer later for you. Go ahead.
I was just wondering if, if the planning department has, has any inquiries on this?
Okay, we'll get an answer to that for you once it's back to our level. All right. So at this point, we will go to public comment.
And I do see a few hands raised for public comment.
All right.
So let's hear from Jean Rash.
Thank you. I, I hope the council will uphold the planning commission. And I'm sure it's hard when you hear the human story, but our codes take a lot of work to create staff time, community time, and it's our best effort at a majority opinion of where we're going. We have voted with our codes as to what we value and some of this is aesthetic. And we all, I don't think there's special circumstances here. We all are surrounded by a lot of traffic because we're very popular city. I have a lot of traffic around me. Uh, we are all encumbered by the homeless. My neighbor found a homeless man sleeping in her bushes. But if the answer was to put up irregular fencing that's too high, we would then have traffic and homeless and an ugly city. So I hear the problems of the appellant, but higher fences, I don't think are the answer. I would encourage you to support the planning commission who took a lot of time with this. I too drove by the site and I followed the planning commission peripherally. And I was hoping they would come to this decision. So I, I just want you to know that there's a lot of attention to code compliance. If anything, what I hear from the community is that we want more enforcement of code compliance and not less. We want to work toward our common goals together. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And next we have Tammy Jennings.
Hi, my name's Tammy Jennings. I live in Monterey and I live around the corner from this property. And I would ask that the council can't figure the word, not go with the, with the suggestion. This property is also right off one of the highway off ramps. It's right around the corner. So it has more access than most other neighborhood streets. And as the other gentleman was just saying, Byright Market and that intersection right there by the school, there is a problem anyway. There is a lot of traffic. I feel for this applicant because I myself had a fence variance done. And because there, it's more than just And because there, it's more than just one house. It's more than one uh, building. And it's housing more than one family. It's, it's a different situation than if it was just a single family home that wanted to put up their fence in the front or along the side. I say let them continue with the fence. It doesn't block anything. It doesn't hurt anything. It looks nice. I say let it go. Thank you.
And I do not see any further hands raised right now, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, well, thank you Tammy and, and Jane for phoning in. We appreciate that. Alright, um. At this point, we, the appellate, which in this case would be Mr. uh, Mickle. You get uh, any final comments based on public comment that you heard? If you want to take that opportunity?
Uh, Mr. Mickle, I may have hit mute by accident when asking you to unmute if you had just unmuted. So please unmute one more time.
I don't think I have any.
Alright, so Mr. Mickle indicated uh, he didn't have anything to add. Alright, back to the, I'll close the public hearing, back to the city council for deliberations and thoughts and motions. Councilmember Dan?
Yeah, um, I, I do have a, from public comment, it kind of came up a couple more questions.
Oh, yeah.
Did, did the um, this is to Kim, did, did the planning commission talk about the off ramp and the amount of traffic and um, because I think this is probably one of the only off ramps in our city that actually dump into a uh, resident. I'm sure there are others, but that's one I, I'm thinking of. And, and I'm sure that house does, or that whole intersection gets a lot of traffic off that off ramp. Was there any discussion about that off ramp at all?
So there was considerable discussion about traffic. Um, I don't know if they specifically discussed the off ramp, but um, I think everybody agrees there's fairly high traffic volumes on the street and it's, there's a spot, there's a four-way stop there. Um, so the planning commission did discuss that. Um, and it was a three, I believe it was a three-two vote. It was, it was one of the closer ones we've had. Um, but they ultimately went back to the findings for variance and they made the conclusion that um, it would, in their opinion, be a grant of special privilege. And um, I think the other freeway off ramp we have is English. It, um, the, and it dives into English street um, as well. So we, we have a couple neighborhoods that have freeway off ramps, but not that many.
So my question is, is, is there a way that um, because I, I understand it's an ordinance and a couple, one caller said that you want to make sure that you, you uphold your ordinances and, and I agree with that. And, and if you allow it in other parts of the city, uh, then you'll have six-foot fences all over the city and, and I get that. But is there a way that we could uh, put in the ordinance that just at those, some of those off ramps? Where they have a lot of traffic coming off the freeway? That they could, that we could allow them to have a, a higher fence? That, is that a possibility?
Well, the city council could always direct us to rewrite our fence ordinance if that's the question. And we could um, consider additional factors and change fence site requirements. But I bet your answer, your question is probably, could you adopt this variance? With specific findings. So what we, if you're thinking about wanting to support the variance, then you need to come up with specific findings. Um, things that you could look at that aren't really site, well, they're general area located, not necessarily site located. As you could say, the site is within so many feet of a freeway off ramp. Um, it is at a four-way stop. I would, I would try, if that's your thought process, that it's at a four-way stop, there's too much traffic, it's so many feet from the freeway off ramp. I would try to distinguish it that way because otherwise we have a lot of difficulty when we look at all our three lots, which is like all of lower Old Town, all of lower New Monterey, all of Oak Grove.
I, I wasn't, thank you, Kim. I, I wasn't talking about for all four-way stops. I was just talking about particular particular four-way stops that, that are that close to an off ramp. That's all. That's the only thing I was thinking of.
Okay.
I'd love to have some comments from other council members about the, the idea that I just threw out there.
Yes, councilmember Ann?
Yeah, to follow up on the, what the Dan's talking about, I, I'm kind of in the same place. Um, it, it just seems like the circumstances of the freeway and the high volume of traffic and the noise at the ground level of this property at a four-way stop. Um, it makes sense to have a sound barrier for the purpose of having this, uh, you know, a fence, but obviously, you know, the, the dumpster on the, on the one side needs to be fixed so that the gate doesn't open into the sidewalk and needs to be properly done. But it just seems like that we're missing something here. If the ordinance is restrictive in terms of, I mean, that's where the planning commission was at because I, I did read their, their notes and their comments. But it seemed like they were stuck in having to go with the letter of the law because that's what the ordinance was and because they could not find a special uh, exception to the rule. So it just seems like i- if we had an opportunity to look at this with a little more variance because it's a freeway street and because it's a four-way stop and it's acknowledging it's probably one of the busiest intersections we have. Um, it seems like there ought to be some way to approach that. Uh, but it sounds like we can't do that with the current ordinance that we have. Um, I'd like to see some um, second look at this, taking into the fact that we should consider the high volume of traffic. Um, and, and it's a commercial area right down the street, so there's obviously a lot of traffic. But it just seems, I'm a little stuck on the, the corner and, and the reverse corner and the limitations of the consideration that you could only have a four-foot high fence. To me, that just sort of flies in the face of common sense. So I'm just trying to find a, a different way to do this. And I don't know if it's, it's sending, sending staff directed to try and rewrite some portions of this ordinance for the fence ordinance that allows some different variation for circumstances like this. Uh, or the findings are that because it's on a high-volume street and it's noisy and it's a four-way stop. And I think it should be allowed. I think the planning commission struggled with the same thing that we're struggling with is that the ordinance doesn't give us enough latitude to make common sense decisions. And that's, that's my first comment.
Alright, well, uh, councilmember Allen's going to speak. Kim, can you put up the slide with reference to uh, the findings to grant the variance while Alan and Alan will go ahead?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, councilmember.
You know, um, somebody said we're a nation of laws. We don't always like those laws. Sometimes we'd like those laws to be uh, to be modified for us for, for a variety of reasons, but we're a nation of laws because that is what, you know, we as a community have come together to agree on as our standards. I thought Jean Rash said it very well. And nobody's above the law, not a homeless person and not a landlord and property owner. We all have to abide by the laws. Um, if I'm driving my car and I'm speeding and I say to the officer, well, look at those other people who are speeding. I don't think that's a very persuasive argument. I don't think it's gonna, I don't think it's gonna get very far. So what I heard in the presentation, I don't really think um, gave me any grounds to justify a waiver. I heard what aboutism, like what about over there? What about over there? That doesn't impress me much. Um, I heard um, a red herring that somehow it's because of homeless people. And I find that offensive, to be quite frank. Um, I also don't find it meaningful because a four-foot fence, a six-foot fence has nothing to do with whether a homeless person might find their way onto that property. Unless they're gonna block off the driveway as well and completely fence it in and, and so on. So that, it's not about that. Um, traffic? I don't think the traffic just began. You know, that's not like a new condition that would have sort of justified putting up this higher fence. That's a busy street. Presumably a property owner who bought that property knew that it was a busy street. And they chose to buy it anyway. And that's okay. That, that was their choice. So to me, the arguments that were made, traffic, homeless people, um, what aboutism? None of those really justify setting aside our ordinance. And in fact, there's a good reason for the ordinance. Aesthetics. Do we really want a city that has, you know, basically fronts uh, fronts the street and front sidewalks with large walls and fences? And um, so to me, I just don't see grounds for this. I think the planning commission made the right decision. Um, I think this would be a grant of special privilege. I think that it would, I don't, I don't see how it's justifiable from a public safety point of view. I don't see, um, it's a negative from an aesthetic point of view. And it's contrary to our ordinance. If some of the council members want to rewrite the ordinance, that would be a whole different thing. And we could pick that up. I don't think we should. But that's how I see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember Alan. Appreciate it. Councilmember Tyler?
Um, Kim, if, if, if I could have you finish, um, you were responding to a question from councilmember Albert earlier. And you were speaking to how um, the conditions in some of the other neighborhoods. And I was hoping you could just finish your thought there because I, 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 I was sensing where you were going, but I, I think it's helpful if, if you were able to finish your thought.
Um, so the way that I think about it as planner is where are our three districts? And so we have large portions of our neighborhoods that are zoned multifamily. Um, including like Hawthorne Street, parts of David Street, lower New Monterey, lower Old Town, all of Oak Grove. Um, and so if, if, if the council wants to differentiate this lot from all the other our three lots, you need to point to specific characteristics of why this property is different. Otherwise, you know, then we should probably support variances or probably change our regulations for a lot more our three lots. And so you know, the, the one thing that councilmember Albert brought up that um, he was describing as a major difference was the distance of this property from a freeway off ramp. There's probably a minimal number of lots that have that situation. So if you're, you know, I would try to look to situations like that to describe the difference if you're trying to do that.
And if I, I'm wondering if we can um, request that the policy be looked at to be updated, or do we need to make a determination tonight that is one way or another in regards to the appeal?
Well, I would say you have an app, I mean, the city attorney can provide her input, but I would say if you have an application in front of you, you need to act upon that. Um, and need to make a decision. We can always reevaluate our city code requirements and bring those back.
Is the, is there a way that we can deny the appeal? And have any changes that are made? Be pending a further discussion or further determination of the policy by the city? I know that sounds a little bit convoluted, but I'm just trying to see if there's any way without having them take the fence down, if the city was able to consider a policy change that they could, we could wait until that policy change process occurred.
Well, you, you, if I may, may, you, you have an option um, tonight to um, make a, to deny the appeal. Or to uh, uh, allow the fence as is and make specific findings. And then you can ask staff to uh, come back with a revised ordinance if you go, want to go that far. Um, and then council has done that previously when we talked about the marijuana lab. Where you basically uh, decided that, that the planning commission uh, decision was, was something you liked to, to change. And we, we changed that evening uh, and gave the marijuana lab an application. Uh, and, and then came back with an ordinance change. So um, you can do that tonight, but I don't think there is a either or, that there is a, a medium middle ground right now for, for the current appeal hearing.
So, so I think um, what I would say then is as much as I understand um, Dan, the point that you're making in regards to the proximity to an off ramp. Um, even if we gave staff some direction to relook at um, the city policy in regards to fences. Um, I think we would still need that public input process to occur. Um, and, and for that to actually be implemented before um, we can base something off of that. And so although I'm empathetic towards the applicant, um, it's hard for me to say that that's fair for us to consider for this one and, and not allow uh, the city code to be reflective of, um, reflective of that.
Okay, good. Okay, go, um, go ahead, Dan, then I, I'd like.
I just wanted, because I, I had two people talk about that. Uh, I just want to make sure I'm clear that I, I didn't say I was supporting the, the, or supporting not denying it. I'm just saying that that because of the off ramp, it, it seems to me like it's more difficult for this, this property to, to handle all the traffic. That, that's all I'm saying. I, I, I didn't say I wasn't going to um, say no to the denial. Uh, but, but I do think that, that, that one of my biggest issues of believe it or not, is that, yeah, we are a country of laws and we do have people speeding in our neighborhoods. Larger fences that we're allowing to have. And, but we're telling this neighborhood, this neighbor, you, you can't have a six-foot fence, but we have other people that have six-foot fence. And so they are breaking the law. When you think about it. So I mean, that's just the point I, I wanted to make, that if we're going to, if we're going to uphold this, then I hate to say it, but I, I think you need to go around and tell everybody. My personal opinion. Because everybody else is breaking the law.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I, I'd like to, I'd look at the findings again. You had them up, Kim, then you took them down. Which is fine. Okay, state law says special circumstances are conditions applicable to the property. That means you can uh, allow a variance if it meets these three items, correct? And so it says special circumstances are conditions, number one, applicable to the property. Location. So Dan has brought up the point that the location of this property being there an off ramp and an on ramp, by the way. Uh, it seems to me that applies. The state didn't say anything more than location. And so I find that finding applies to uh, I, I'm, I would, um, in fact, I'm gonna make a motion to uh, uphold the appeal based on these findings. That's when we, basically we would allow the fence to uh, stay. And part of my motion would be a correction of the trash enclosure. Secondly, applications not detrimental or injurious to the property or improvements of the vicinity. And again, it's a very busy street. It doesn't impact anyone. We have staff corroboration of that. And I don't consider it a special privilege because going back to number one, location. The finding is because of the location near the ramps and the freeway, I don't consider that a special privilege. And so someone in New Monterey or Old Town and comes in and says, um, well, because of our location, I comfortably can say, no, this variance was applied because of its location next to the freeway off ramp. So I think um, these findings are met. Then if we could look at the city findings? Kim, there's another box with the city findings? Kim, there's another box with the city findings. This is state law. To uh approve a variance.
Kim, we can't hear you.
All right, uh. Additional findings, and it says you only need one to allow for a variance. Uh, we've heard from the report that this property does meet number one. It's. Adjoins or across from a commercial area. Two, it's not a visual barrier. And three. It doesn't create a hardship with the location of the infrastructure. I personally think that we have more than adequate findings. So my motion is to deny the appeal. Which would allow the fence and my part of my motion is. Uh, to correct the uh ameliorate and bring up to code the trash enclosure. Based on the findings as I outlined. So that's my motion.
Second with a comment.
And second, and now you can go at it. All right, and.
So Mayor, I want to, I want to concur and and I want to go just a little deeper on the. On the uh location piece. It not only is it the freeway. Um, but I've just been thinking about, well, why is there so much traffic? It's not just the freeway. But it's a main arterial. Uh, right down the block is uh North Fremont as well, and a gas station, commercial property right at. Both ends of the street. And it a main conduit and a arterial that is heavily used by. Quite a few people. So not only is it just. You know, a a s- street that services the freeway, but it's also. A local arterial route that is a feeder for. A high volume of traffic. So I just want to say that about the. Location um. Significance to this, and I I agree, and I think you outlined the the right points that I totally agree with.
All right, and more discussion, agreements, disagreements? You know, nothing's personal. Go for it. Councilmember Tyler?
Mayor, I just wanted to um kind of confirm real quick one thing, and then I have some comments. Um, when you made the motion the second time around, you had said to appeal. So I just wanted to confirm you meant to uphold. Is that correct?
What I meant was to uh uphold or allow the appeal, yes.
Okay, all right, perfect. I just wanted to verify that.
Better word is to approve the appeal. That's a better word. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
Absolutely. Um. I, again, as as empathetic as I am towards the situation. Um, to me, the conditions. That we're looking at. Um, aren't unique to the property itself. It might be unique to the neighborhood and there in the. In the street, in the homes that maybe surround the the off and on ramps. Um, and to me, I think that's appropriate for something. That we change in city code, if that's if that's appropriate, and we have a public participation process where people can provide input and we. Change the code. Um, but without that, I don't feel like it's fair to. Our community and our neighbors to do something specifically for this property. And um and and not make this something that is. More streamlined with uh. Uh, what we would expect from from all of our communities and and. Can't remember who said this, it might have been. Dan, um, in in regards to the neighboring. Uh, fences and also not being in compliance. And there are things that I, you know, we've discussed, unfortunately, you know, we're not in a situation where we have all those. Uh, other properties in front of us. Today, we have this property specifically, and so. As much as I agree that I think we should be following up with some code enforcement. Um, to to get. Properties in compliance with the the city code. Um, that's not what's in front of us right now. Um, and so I have to make my decision based off of of what's presented in front of us, and and unfortunately, I I I can't support the motion as is.
Thank you.
Well, if I can comment on Ed's. Comments?
Absolutely.
So Ed, um, I I I hold it again to the the off ramp. Because if if I uh justified it by a a busy four-way street. I've, there's a lot of busy four-way streets around the high school or around elementaries. Uh, that that would allow them uh special circumstances. But again, I I just, I want to keep. Hammering, as you know, that off ramp, because I know that off ramp is used a lot. And that is specific and special to that particular four-way stop. It is, because it's not anywhere else in the city, except for what Kim said, English. So that's, that's where. I have my um. My thought process, so um. I guess.
No, I, I, it makes sense.
Okay.
All right, any more comments? And again, well, this is one of those.
I can't support the motion. Uh, to me, it feels like we're we're granting a special privilege. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. I respect that.
Why, so can I just ask one one more thing? Does that mean that everyone in that little four-way stop can build a s- a six-foot fence? I think that's what we're saying, basically. That everyone can build a six-foot fence around the ramp. Um, I mean, I agree, I agree with Tyler that. We're putting the cart before the horse. We should, we should change the ordinance to allow something like this first before. We we just make a decision. That's why I like Tyler's idea. Of uh maybe working on an ordinance for that particular area and. Kind of putting aside, letting him tear the fence down until we work on something like that.
And how close do you have to be to the uh to the off ramp?
Well, I don't know, thousand feet. I I don't have any idea.
Well, the point is, right now, what we're doing, anybody could claim, well, I'm I'm within a thousand, I'm within two thousand. I'm somewhere on a street that has an off ramp, right? So that's the problem with what we're doing.
So uh, through the mayor, can I address something there?
Just please.
There's no reason why, there's no reason why we can't do two things at one time. We can act on this appeal and show reasonableness. At the same time, I think we have the staff that's standing at the ready to take some direction for. Uh, and asked to look at the uh. The fence ordinance, because I think it's not the only time it's come up, and there's probably an opportunity that if we said. To the staff, you heard us, you heard the planning commission. What would you recommend that we come back and fix this, so we don't have variances that are stacked up, and we've got another forty or fifty variances? So why can't we? Also, at the same time, ask the city manager. Can we get staff working on some look at the ordinance? It hasn't been looked at since nineteen ninety-one? And see if we can't anticipate that we may have some more of these questions. So I asked the city manager then, after this is done. Can we ask our city staff to? Fine tune and take what the planning commission's talked about, take what we've talked about, and see if there's an opportunity to. Adjust some of the ordinance.
Of course, we can do that. Um, however. You're not bombarded with requests for variances. Um, uh, this is, this is. This is the first appeal of offense that we have in front of the council for four years or so, five years, I don't even. And uh, state law gives you the chance. To allow variances and and the the. There is a reason why state law gives you a chance to allow a variance and gives you. Criteria for that, because. I think what the idea is, you don't want us to rewrite code comp- uh code city codes. Every time you get a case in front of you that is slightly different. We would be writing and writing and writing for every case. So you have an illegal opportunity to. Um, give uh give a variance and make specific findings. And and I I would suggest to council to take that opportunity. And really take a step back and see how many of those cases have we actually dealt with over the past years? And the answer is not so many. I would even say zero in front of council. So there is not really a um a demand for that out there. And in this case, you are asked by by an palan to. Uh, take a good look at the specific site and and uh decide whether you like to grant a variance or not. But I don't think this needs to go into a staff program with public outreach, and I tell you right now where this will end. Uh, the neighbors will say, by all means, keep the four feet. So um, I I just want to share that thought with you. Yeah, and. And it will be the pleasure of the council. What do you want us to do? Absolutely.
Yeah, and and I can appreciate that, and and I appreciate the fact that you're. You're also pointing out that this doesn't happen very often, so we want to be careful about not adjusting policy. I'm just simply saying. If there is additional ideas out there, you never want to close the book on improving ordinances and policies that. Um, are responsive to what the community needs. That's, that's all I'm saying. Uh, one last comment. I know it's late. I just wanted to to wrap this up in my thinking that. Um, some said that this is a nation of laws and refers to that as as if that's some. Um, normal standard that we strive for. Absolutely. But also, there's a provision in the law that's also allowing us to have some discretion. And looking at the intent of the law and the spirit of law. Not everything is enforced one hundred percent of the time. We know that. We see it all across. Uh, our state, uh, in our county. We know all laws are not enforced, and there's a reason that they're not. But in the spirit of this one, in this particular one. I I think that there's some justification due to the freeway proximity to the property. Um, so, yeah, you all know that I am a person that believes in the law, obviously with my past career. But at the same time, I understand that there's discretion. And there's a a fine edge to the law at a time when you do enforcement. And when you do the education side. So there's a big difference from being zero tolerance to being um tolerant and understanding. For the circumstances.
All right, everyone, very well said. Any final comment? Councilmember Tyler?
I'm I'm interested in hearing what Chrissy has to say, because she has her hand up. But and I do have some comments too, but I might it might be impacted by what she might have to say.
Okay, thank you. I missed that hand. Thank you, Tyler, for bringing that to my attention.
Thanks, thanks for humoring me. Um, I I think some of the comments might be reconcilable here. Um, I'm hearing concerns of too broad of an application. Um, based on the current proposed findings, and then also concerns about the existing situation. And so there might be a way to tighten up. What you're trying to achieve and make it more specific to the uniqueness of this property, if that is in fact what the council is finding. Um, and Kim can probably help with this better than than me, but um, for example. It sounds like it's because it's within X number of feet of an off ramp. It sounds like it's because it's within X number of feet of a four-way stop. Um, there's other um unique attributes of this location potentially. To tighten up the findings um here. And so I would just submit that there might be more. That you can add. Um, and Kim, you may have some thoughts on that.
Yeah, I hear you. I thought when um when I made my motion and I outlined the. The findings that I agreed with, I pretty much hit those. I believe uh with my rationale, whether you agree with it or not, I I. Did want to make sure those findings were explicit, in my thinking at least, and in my motion. Tyler, I'm sorry, Councilmember Tyler, you have the floor, and I don't.
Yeah. I wasn't sure if Kim was going to jump in there. Um. Um, but uh, uh, yeah, I I I guess, are are we clarifying um? A number of feet in the motion away from the highway, and and then I guess my follow-on question to that is. If we are saying that, does that, does that change the city code? Like, are we setting precedent here to where other properties that are within that? Distance to an on-off ramp, they're allowed to also. Develop a uh, I don't know what just happened there.
Pay your PG and A bill, you know that.
The wifi is still working, so. That was really scary.
The more, the more specific the findings in this case, the more narrowly it will be applied in any future cases. If it's broad-brushed. Then more. Residents could make the same argument and have an exception apply, have a variance apply. If you make very tight findings. Tied to the unique location of this residence, and I don't believe the four-way stop was included in that. Um, I I might be mistaken. Um, it would have less, it would have less future application. And it sounds to me like the intent is to not have this broadly. Applied. Um, if it is going to pass, I I don't know.
Right, well, the the point here is. Council has discretion. We could continue this, go get our tape measure. And go measure how far this property is from the off ramp. But to me, the finding is sufficient to say, because of the location, state law specifically said, location. And and I interpreted that as location next to a freeway. A council member did bring up the fact that other people next to a freeway might want a six-foot fence as well. And frankly, the people living there, I would be open to that. But I would do it on a case-by-case basis, because living there a freeway on an off ramp, that's tough. And we have to think about the quality of life of the people who are living in the apartment. So, yes, I I can't can't imagine how more explicit I could be. You can help if you want. When I went through the three state findings and the three uh city findings, if there's something that would make it clearer. I'm happy to uh do that in my motion. I guess that would be a question for staff or.
Yeah, I. You know, I think the location adjacent to off and on ramps. And I could even go back and get a specific distance. I can easily. Go back in the record and do that, and then. It's adjoins a commercial property. I I don't know what else you would come up with personally, but.
Multi-family housing potentially.
Well, and I also mentioned the city, the city findings were a variance too, and I thought, again, I meant, I don't want to repeat it, but I I. Tried to be very explicit in the findings.
Yes, you had it, adjoins a commercial use, not a visual barrier, and there is a physical hardship due to location because of the freeway off ramp and on ramps.
That was three of them, but I did use all six of them as outlined uh in the slide that you put up. Thank you. All right, has Elvis left the building? Has the train left the station? Has the horse left the barn? Are we ready to vote? Yes, all right. And again, very respectful, compelling arguments on all sides, and I always respect the decisions that we end up with. Whether I'm in the majority or not. So let's see what happens. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, um, so how do I answer this? Um, of, yes, I'm affirming the motion.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
No.
Councilmember Williamson?
No.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes. All right, the motion passes three to two. Folks, it's ten to eleven. Uh, don't want to preclude any. Any comments, what, maybe we can rush through those uh. But we do still have an item eighteen. As an action item, when we adjourn to the Ocean View Community Services District. So uh with that. Uh, let's go to council comments. If anyone is compelled to want to share something, uh, we certainly, the floor is open.
No comments for me, Mayor. Thank you.
No comments for me.
I think no, and okay, me either. All right, uh, city manager reports?
No city uh manager report.
All right, we will adjourn to our Ocean View Community Services District. Meeting. And we do have a a letter. From uh, let's go down, let me see, we have a consent agenda. Which is, I'm sorry, is to receive the Community Service District quarterly quarterly report, and I'm guessing there is none.
Uh, just what's in the agenda report. No, no update.
Okay, do we need a motion on that? To receive that?
No.
No, all right. Then let's go to the Ocean View Community Services District Public Appearance, and that is uh LAFCO. Has uh is soliciting from special districts, and this is is one. For uh input and uh. A nomination of a. Board member for LAFCO who would be representing. The special district. So uh, city manager, do you have a a quick slide on that, or?
No, um, I I unfortunately do not have a slide for that. There are three candidates that are being proposed uh to be. Um, uh, appointed, uh. All three applications are in your. Package, and um I I submit to the council that you. Um, select one of the three candidates, uh, and then we will uh fill out the ballot appropriately.
All right. Let's uh find out if there's any public comments. Let's uh, find out if there's any public comment on this, please.
And there are no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll close that part of the hearing back to the council. What is your pleasure?
Here, if I may.
Councilmember Tyler, please.
So I think one of the options that I saw in the report was that we could defer the decision to you as the mayor. And um. I, I trust your judgment, a- and I think for sake of time, it might be appropriate for us to move forward in that fashion. Um, I'm not sure how the rest of the council feels. Um. I'm seeing at least one head, one head nod.
It would be cool.
Maybe two, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to defer that decision to you as the mayor.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Uh, yes, with a big thank you, I think.
That was a sixty-yard cut.
That was a good one. It went out right over the freeway on ramp.
Over the six-foot fence.
I think, I think we'll uh, adjourn back to our city council meeting. And at this point, uh, you know, I always say this, but I really mean it. Thank you to the public and to our staff and the council for another stimulating meeting and. Thank you for keeping the synapses connecting here in this uh. This gray, gray head right here. So thanks, everybody. Have a good evening and the rest of the week.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody.